Alright, sick. We're all here.
We did it. Good job.
Congratulations, everyone, for making it to the inaugural council meeting of the Council of Mofuckin'. Hey, y'all. Round of applause.
Clap, 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 clap.
Alright, so, um, I know I brought some shit to the table to propose. I don't know if you guys, show of hands, who brought some legislation possibly to pass today? Okay, we got, uh, we got Mr. Simone, we got, uh, Ms. Juno. I think I know what Ms. Juno has, um, and I also know what Mr. Simone has. Um, what about you, Nikota? What you got?
Uh, just some legislative changes to a couple of laws on the books.
Word? Okay, so.
I'll just add, I have some things to discuss for possible legislation for next week, depending on how we want to fit that in.
Okay, uh, we'll do that at the end. Uh, first, um, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go around, uh, I mean, like I just did, and figure out who's got some shit to propose. And then, uh, we are going to propose that shit. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it. Whoever's got something they're proposing, we're gonna talk about it. Uh, we're going to figure out, uh, questions. We're gonna, if anyone's got any questions for that particular proposal, they're gonna ask them, and then we're going to vote on it. I don't see any reason not to vote in the day, um, especially if you have exhausted questions. So, why don't we start with, um, Mr. Simone?
Alright, uh, first thing would be, speed limit. Operating the speed limit, uh, across the board. I think we've had you talks between, I think you brought it up as well as one of your things, right? There's a, an interest from the people. I think there's an interest between us as well. Uh, my suggestion would be fifty, seventy, ninety, but those are just kind of numbers I came up with on the spot, so they can obviously be changed.
I, 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 it says in general sense, I think if we're giving the people more leash, uh, that, that leash should be used to hang them if they break it. I, I think if it gets up, I'm, I'm talking about doubling or tripling the, the fines for the, the speed-related offenses.
Uh, I'm for that.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that. If, if you, if you're giving them what they want in that terms, if they keep breaking it even with more speeds, sure.
I think that would also, uh, you know, help out with lost revenue for the city, you know, with the less people speeding.
True.
Yep.
Um, so do you, you guys wanna double the fines for speeding and shit?
How, how, how much are we increasing them by? Like, what's the, it's thirty-five, fifty-five, sixty-five now?
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's something that has been brought to the table more than once.
What the hell is that?
I think that's Brick.
Hi, Brick. Hey, I'm here to help.
Oh, regardless, sorry, is, is it thirty-five, fifty-five, seventy-five now?
So, right now, it's by up to thirty-five miles an hour. And X is the speed limit, so it's not, it's not limits. Uh, it's, it's rated based on how far you exceed.
We're, I'm saying, sorry, what's, what's the baseline speed in, in, in the cities, like?
Thirty-five, fifty-five is for, uh, county roads, so Joshua, uh, Route sixty-eight, um, things like that. And then, uh, highways, anything, you know, with a divider, multiple lanes, is, uh, seventy-five.
That's Brick, guys. He thought you were supposed to be Watch the Watchman.
So, the, the way that the laws are currently structured is, um.
Nope, 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 no.
Hmm, these are actually phrased incorrectly. The old language got in here. I'm surprised no one's challenged these.
Didn't it used to be like, uh, if you were at thirty-five, then you, that was it? Even if, uh, you weren't over it?
Oh, oh, no, no, okay, it works, it works. It says drives in excess of the speed limit by up to thirty-five miles an hour.
Oh.
So, the way this reads, if we upped it to fifty-five, third-degree speeding, the basic speeding charge would cover anywhere from fifty-five to ninety. So, we'd probably need to tighten the ranges on the degrees as well.
Okay, uh, who's taking notes here? Um, we got, uh, Alex maybe in the back?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Okay, um, so yeah, we need to tighten the ranges on the speeding charges. We got to, uh, uh, are we, do we, are we in agreement that we want to double the speed, or the, the fines if we're?
Right now, they're a hundred and fifty, three hundred, and four hundred and fifty dollars.
That is not enough. Yeah, I would even say maybe triple.
I was about to say.
Doubles, I think, I think doubles fine. That is a lot of money to some people.
I guess. Are we gonna double the amount of points, uh, that are added to the license as well?
Points should be the same.
I have no issue, I was just asking.
Okay, so just to recap for Alex's sake, uh, up the speed limits accordingly, so in the city or anywhere, it's fifty-five. Uh, county roads or anything like that, seventy-five, and then highways is ninety. And I will adjust the ranges on the limits basically roughly to half. So, right now, uh, you can drive up to seventy miles an hour and still get a third-degree speeding ticket in the city. Um, so it would roughly change now to, you start off being able to drive fifty-five, and let's say you can still only go seventy, right, for third degree? So, instead of having a thirty-five mile an hour leeway, you got like a fifteen.
Hmm.
And then if you cross that threshold, uh, let's say, so you, you exceed that, uh, then that would go up another thirty miles an hour. So, let's say from seventy to eighty-five would be second-degree speeding, and then eighty-five and above would be first-degree speeding in a fifty-five mile an hour zone.
Perfect. Can you amend those directly, or do we have to, uh?
I, I can handle all that.
Okay, um, sick. Yeah, so, uh, let's do a vote then, uh. As presented with the, the doubling of fines, the, uh, the staying the course of the, the points on the license and the current values as stated for the new speeding laws. Aye.
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 Alright, let's, let's go clockwise, so we can, so we can get this shit written down. Nikota?
One, two, three, four.
Aye.
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 Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Good, what a good start we've got going on. Everyone's in agreement. This is good.
That's good.
That's government, baby.
As an aside, Crane, is it possible that a councilman can get MDTs, so we could look at the laws while up here, if we're gonna be discussing this kind of stuff?
Uh, yeah, that's gonna take me a little bit, and I gotta get some info from you guys, so we'll do it afterwards. For now, I'll just reference stuff to you.
Yeah, I just meant for the future.
Yeah, no, I will. It's just, it's gonna take me a good hour or so to get it all set up, so.
Yeah, fair enough.
I'll see you guys, uh, request more information if I need it, but I gotta configure permissions because, anyway, I'm not getting into it. Just, yeah, I'll get it done, yeah.
Uh, let's get, uh, Ms. Juno.
Uh, sorry, what?
Present, present thy, uh, legislation.
Um, so, the, the thing that I, uh, give me one second. Um, is there anything you specifically wanna bring up? Because our stuff is the same.
Um, I want you to, to bring up the, uh, the one that you came up with.
The panic button?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, okay, so actually, I put this in a little document that I'm happy to share with everyone as well. Uh, give me one second. So, I'm gonna share this with everyone now. That should all be on your mobile phones. Uh, so it's an emergency panic button. Um, we've had these before, um, you guys know what they are. If you're unfamiliar with them, um, Nikota, you'd be extremely familiar, Malton, you'd be familiar also. Um, so the panic button is basically, we'd have a panic button, uh, installed in places, uh, like City Hall. Um, City Hall, the hospital especially. So, the way that it was previously was, it was installed in restaurants, um, and nowhere else, which I thought was insane. Because why res, why, why not restaurants and the hospital? Um, so the question is, why can't people just nine-one-one? So, yes, they obviously can, but if there is a, if there is a huge threat in the, eh, within a building such as City Hall, and people don't wanna agitate that threat at large, the most discreet way to alert the authorities would be a panic button, because it wouldn't be in visible sight to the public. It would have to be somewhere like under a desk. Um, so the perfect example would be here in City Hall, it'd be under a desk, which, uh, has that glass barrier between the public and the staff, because the staff stand behind the desk. So, this would then alert the authorities, um, and it would, I would hope that it'd be considered a number-one priority, um, for units to respond to. Um, uh, in terms of restaurants, um, I'm down for this to be placed in senior buns. However, I, my, my number-one priority is City Hall.
My bad chat.
And the hospital, a hundred percent, um.
Is there a charge that would currently cover if someone, uh, intentionally misuses the button?
Mm-hmm.
So, this is what Nikota, uh, and Edda and I were talking about. I'm not entirely sure if there is, but, um, I'd like their.
No, there is not a charge for that. Um, there was never a charge for that related to the buttons, uh, five years ago.
What about misuse of nine-one-one?
I believe it's a charge that people.
Yeah, nine-one-one system, the wording sounds very similar.
Way too light for an all-hands-on-deck button for a city hall and hospital.
Other, uh, the only, the only, like, it's, uh, so I don't have necessarily any issue with the idea. I think it's a good idea. Um, I'm just not sure, uh, I think we would probably need to, uh, we could take a vote and, but knowing that it would be contingent upon reaching out, uh, to city infrastructure workers and seeing the feasibility of implementation, because I know there is a lot of things that are being worked on right now, so I don't wanna, uh, this would be one that I wouldn't, uh, announce publicly until we get confirmation that it's feasible.
I, I, I know, so I, I, I get the, the wording in there. Um, I, I don't know if, if we could do like amendments to legislation down the line, but I think as like a, a soft beta test, maybe it's only in government buildings for now. And then, in a month, we, we vote on the restaurant thing, you know?
Yeah, I think, I think, especially if there is in the future, when we have more food establishments, I think that's when we address it, because right now, every motherfucker is at Senior Buns. And every crazy person's at Senior Buns as well.
Yeah, I can attest to the fact that we don't need a panic button for there to be all, a lot of officers there, so, right now, we're there all the time.
What's up, Michael?
Wanted to mention, Kermy's here with food. If somebody could load him in.
Uh, I feel like the issue that, it, like, the stappings at Senior Buns is because it's the only place. So, people get annoyed with each other, there's too much, like, going on, etc. So, the second, the second another place comes, like, pops up, I feel like it's gonna deviate those issues. It's not just because it's crazy people.
Yeah, and that's when the panic button gets installed at the restaurants, because at that point, it's like, we don't have the excuse of, well, people are gonna call nine-one-one regardless. Because I'm assuming that they do, Nikota, when shit pops off at Senior Buns, because everyone's there.
Are you gonna grunt at me, or are you gonna give me the food?
Uh, I can vouch for at least how useful this would be within the hospital. I know that we have had, um, pretty continuous issues of nine-on-ones getting missed. I'm assuming not ignored, I wouldn't want to assume that, but, uh, uh, very often, if we try to call for help, uh.
My god.
Do not show, so that'd be very useful for us.
Panic button, I'd like the panic button to, I don't know what the dispatch system is, is like now, um, but I would like the panic button to show up just like an alpha would.
Yep, so, again, that might be something we have to talk to the Chief Justice about, because as the, as the dispatch system is in place right now, even if, uh, say I went down and I alphaed, uh, it pops up on dispatch, but there is no, like, you remember how it used to be Juno and Malton? It is not like that anymore. There's no accompanying emergency, uh, noise along with the, the dispatch alert that someone has gone down.
Why don't, uh, why don't we just vote on, on the idea, at least, for panic buttons in the government facilities, and we could worry about the, the kinks of implementation if and when that happens?
And I have a suggestion too about, about things like this. So, when there are things that will obviously require, uh, feasibility checks, I think we should do, like Malton said, like an interest vote, um, just on the idea basis, and then once we get a confirmation of interest from the city council, uh, then that's sort of the, uh, impetus for it to be brought forth and, you know, checked on the feasibility side.
Got it. I wasn't gonna throw water on it.
No, 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 I, I, it, you know, it definitely, this is the kind of idea where I don't wanna vote on it or announce it, because, you know, uh, it could take months, and then we're delivering something we can't, or we're promising something we can't deliver, so.
True.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah, I'm good.
Vote?
At government facilities, aye.
Uh, anyone not in favor? Let's do that. Alright, the ayes have it.
Well, uh, we'll bring it forward for feasibility, and, uh, I'll get back to you guys with what I hear.
Thank you, okay.
Um, I, by the way, I have just put in, uh, the speeding legislation. I'm writing it now, so that we can announce that after the meeting.
Excellent.
Holy shit, alright.
Mister Nikota, what dost thou bringeth to thine council of a table?
Oda, forgot how to spell his name.
Uh, alright, first thing I have on my notes. Uh, has anyone, uh, had a run-in where their vehicle has been booted, or I found another term for this was clamped?
No.
I have heard of it, uh, being talked about, but no, it hasn't happened to me.
Okay, so these are devices that, uh, people are attaching to tires, which, as far as I'm aware, they render the vehicle unmovable. Uh, but, people are doing it without any legal backing or authority to use. Uh, as far as we have been led to believe, the only people that should be using this are on-duty tow workers. Uh, so, I am proposing something along the lines of, now again, talk about it, but the wording I will probably need a little bit of help with, but, criminal use of a boot or a clamp. Uh, this would entail, uh, it's unlawful for you to place a boot on a vehicle, boot or clamp on a vehicle, if you're a, if you are not an on-duty tow worker. I also have two stipulations on what vehicles can and can't be clamped, which would be, it must be unoccupied and it must be illegally parked.
Sounds good to me.
Where do you get these from? Is it?
Correct, yeah. My third one is, I will ask for EMS and law enforcement vehicles to be exempt, however, uh, for the law enforcement portion of it, if someone is abusing their right to park their emergency vehicle where they want, I, I think that should be subject to some kind of review of people are just being morons about it, as opposed to, we're responding to something in an emergency, and we just need to park a certain way to get there. I think EMS should get full carte blanche on it, though. I don't think you should be clamping an ambulance ever.
True, I mean, I think if, uh, the police are abusing it, that sounds like an internal issue, or in an extreme case, if it's rampant, maybe the, the civilian oversight board.
Mm-hmm.
Where do you, where do you get these things? Is it from like tow services?
Correct, yes.
So, would it be too broad to, um, have it be named, uh, misuse of, of tow services or something like that? So therefore, like, for example, as well, you could add in, um, emergency vehicles being towed without reason? Or is that too broad?
Might be too broad. It could be other reasons why other people would be able to do this, or any sort of like, um, private, somebody else would be able to do it, that isn't a tow worker, like, they're.
So, the.
I missed something there.
I, I've had this brought to me just, um, several times actually now, as like a legal question. Uh, what, the answer I've given, and this isn't binding, I'm just telling you, this is what I've told people who have come to me and said, either one, I worked in towing, and I have the ability to buy these boots, can I use them? Or two, someone boots my car, can they do that? The answer I've given is that the only time I can see it being legally viable to boot a car would be either one, if it's parked on private property. So, say I own like, you know, Grove Street ten, and somebody parks their car on my lawn. Uh, I see no reason why you can't boot that car, because it's abandoned property left on your property. Um, that being said, the only other time I could really foresee it being legal is if you are, uh, a tow worker, and you are called to do a tow in a high-traffic, high-volatility area, let's say in front of, uh, Senior Buns. And you're worried about, by the time you park the car and get out, someone's gonna try to get in the car and drive it away. In that case, I could understand the justification of temporarily booting the car while you put the truck in position, you know, get it loaded and all that kind of shit. Uh, but I don't know, I, I think there's a whole legal fucking wormhole of allowing people to use these boots, because, uh, well, shit, in most places to operate a tow truck, you need like licensing and insurance and all that kind of shit. Here, we're, we're an emerging economy, right? So, we're just letting anybody drive a tow truck, as long as, you know, they sign in with the right guy.
Right.
Uh, so I'm kinda wary of giving any random Joe just the ability to go around booting cars. I, I don't know.
I, I mean, yeah, like.
I feel like there should be, like, some kind of documentation before they use these, uh, things, like, uh, photo, photographs.
I was actually gonna suggest, yeah, yeah, that's.
Well, they're supposed to do that anyway, right? Like, that's correct.
Yeah.
So legally, the, the, the tow process, and I'm working on this as well, but legally, the tow process is supposed to be that someone not involved in the tow truck, who ends up taking the call, marks a car, and then another person gets the call in the tow truck, and then toes the car. So, when they return it to the lot, the lot logs the state IDs of the person who marked the car and the person who towed the car. They're supposed to be separate, they're not supposed to be the same person. That would be fraud, basically. And then on top of that, the person who marks the car and the person who toes the car is supposed to take pictures, so that they can prove if they're later sued in court by the owner, that the car was indeed parked illegally. So, I, again, I don't, I don't really know what, uh, I don't know how to implement the boot in a way that isn't already there, but that doesn't cause a bunch of headaches. I'm, I'm open to ideas. I'm just, it's something I've struggled with.
I mean, you could, uh, you could carte blanche, say, in, instead of like saying boot is legal, except for, you could say the boot is illegal to use, and it's only legal in these narrow circumstances, such as on your own property, you know, towing company may have a contract with the business, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I think that's probably the most prudent way to go about it, but I'll leave it to you guys on the language, because like I said, I've been up, down, left, and right on this thing, and I ain't come to a good solution yet.
Yeah, that's really difficult. That's what, I, I generally mark cars for tow when they've, like, on sidewalks as I'm walking to work, so.
Yeah, does someone parking on your front lawn qualify as illegal parking then? I feel like it would.
Yes.
Yeah, that's like private property, yeah.
I, I feel like.
I mean, not even that, it's just, it's abandoned property on your private property.
Yeah, okay.
Any property that's left on your property is classified as abandoned or trespassing at the very least, so you control what's on your yard.
Would it, would it be benefit, sorry, go ahead, Malton.
Uh, no, I, I was gonna say, if, uh, if I'm just spitballing here, and, and maybe only those in the judiciary or, or former cops may know about it, where it could be something styled in the form of, of the old Ravens regulations, like the burglary law, where if you're, if, if you put a boot on it, it's on you to, to prove that the boot was legally able to be put on, instead of the, the onus being on someone to prove that it was illegal.
I like that, yeah.
Would we attach prongs to the law, where it's like?
Yeah, so it'd be like.
Satisfied in order?
Yeah, it'd be like, uh, in order to legally make use of a, uh, restrictive boot on a vehicle, you must be, one, uh, operating a contracted, you know, tow truck, or operating on your own private property, two, uh, you must be, um, securing the vehicle for tow within a reasonable amount of time, which allows, again, people to argue what a reasonable amount of time is, so it's good for court. And then finally, uh, you know, you must argue the circumstances or exigency that require the use of the boot, AK, why couldn't you just tow the car?
Yeah, I think that's a good baseline, and we could always adjust it as needed.
Mm-hmm. Then stipulating for EMS and law enforcement, their wave from having their vehicles booted.
Hmm.
So, that's an interesting one, um. You guys are exempt from all parking regulations as long as you have your lights on.
That is true.
So, why wouldn't we just stick with that? Isn't that just easier?
Yeah, but like I said, any, any.
I mean, I, I hate to be, you know, I hate to be harsh, Nikota, but.
You're not being harsh, I don't think so.
If you can't, if you can't remember to turn your fucking lights on, then maybe you should get your car towed.
I do not disagree with you. I don't disagree with that.
The, the only problem I have, and I, I, I hate to use this kind of an argument, but if a cop car goes into impound, is it still a real, like, piece of crap to like try to get that thing out, because it's not tied to an owner? That, that's.
Is that, is that a concern right now? I don't know.
I, I'm asking Nikota, like, are, are these still tied to like a state ID zero and?
Yeah, they're state account owned, I believe.
Yeah.
So, then we probably exempt for the time being, because that's beyond their control.
Yes.
And I just wanna, I just wanna clarify, if people are gonna be morons, but I agree, like, if you're going to, if your excuse for a PD member is, I was going to an emergency call, your lights and sirens should be on anyway, so when you pull up to the scene, it should not matter if you run out of your vehicle straight away. I'm just trying to give people the benefit of the doubt to begin with, but if people are going to be morons, then I have no sympathy for them.
Are, um, are police getting their, their own cars anytime soon, Niko? I'm just trying to think, for in the future, maybe we could.
Uh, well, that's a good time for me to make a small announcement, so.
Okay.
I've clarified this with the treasurer and the mayor already, um, make sure, I mean, this is a good time, is I need to get y'all filled in, so, uh, up until the last two or three days, all government salaries, including PD, EMS, anybody you can think of that, you know, requires authorization to, you know, sign into their job, uh, all of those salaries are being subsidized by the federal government. Uh, as of two or three days ago, um, the federal government found it fit that we have succeeded well enough with Mrs. Wright's help in sort of getting, uh, ourselves solvent with the state account, such that, uh, we are now going to pay our own way. So, all government salaries, including welfare checks, uh, DOC, PD, anything you can think of that has a government paycheck, now comes directly out of the state account. So, as a result of that, uh, we are now going to enter, after discussion with the mayor and the treasurer, into a feeling-out period over the next couple of weeks, where we're going to track the trend of the state account. Uh, and as we hire more people, and as we spend money, we see if we're actually in the positive or not. Uh, if we start trending down, then we'll need to, you know, figure out money-making incentives, things like that. Um, so, that being said, and the reason I bring this up now is, is that, uh, large-scale purchases, like, you know, the EMS helicopter, the PD vehicles and all that, are a no-go for now, until we figure out how the state account is trending. Because if we make a very large investment right now into something like a eight, ten million dollar helicopter, or, you know, fleet of PD cars, and then it turns out we're trending negative in a large way, we could be screwed. Uh, so, that's, uh, that's the sort of grim news for today.
Follow-up, um, are you, so no one owns the, uh, cop cars, right?
No, they're all state-owned, yeah.
Um, have you guys been modifying your cars at all? Can you?
That is a command, uh, issue, but we have been getting them repaired, and we have recently started replacing the engines, which were the only component of the vehicle that were not able to be repaired, back to like showroom status.
From my conversations with Slacks, uh, mayor, I don't think they're in a position yet to be upgrading the cars.
I.
Why, why not?
I was informed that they were possibly adding turbos to the cars? I don't know what that does.
They're testing them, and those are being tested independently.
Uh, there's some issues with how they're owned, with whether or not those upgrades would, uh, stick, is the best way I can put it, so we can discuss that offline.
Yeah.
Um, okay, uh, that's what you guys are gonna have to do though, for now.
Offline.
I would hi- highly recommend looking into flushing that out, especially if you're having trouble catching people on the street right now.
Question marks.
Yeah.
They're recording cars going one-seventy, one-eighty, and it's just impossible to keep up, yeah, that's.
Uh.
Sorry, Nikota, this is just from, yeah, Sean telling me, but.
I mean, you're not saying anything that I, uh, haven't experienced, so you're. Preaching to the choir.
Uh, I, for the record, I think that it's very likely that PD upgrades could be within the budget, even with the trending situation, um, from talking to, to Ms. Treasurer over there, but, uh, again, we need to get with Slacks and figure out the feasibility of how that's even gonna happen.
Yep.
Uh, I, I, I am not for the police department receiving any state funds, uh, for the purpose of car modifications, because, uh, you guys make a lot of fucking money, and you can pay for that shit yourself, dog. I'm gonna be real.
I don't, I don't disagree with him. I heard Cornwood bragging about having like hundreds of thousands of dollars, so.
Yeah.
I, I talked to, I talked, I talked to Kid Archer the other day, she said she had eighty thousand dollars in her bank account, dog.
God, I fucking wish I had, that's crazy.
You know what I'm saying? How much money you got?
Well, with all due respect, I currently have ninety thousand dollars in my personal.
Oh, yeah, I don't have that much.
Fucking Christ.
I've worked fifteen to seventeen-hour shifts since day one.
Yeah.
Oh, word?
Yeah.
Damn.
I'm accepting.
I'm, I'm accepting donations.
Same.
Yeah.
Am I the, am I the brokeest? Am I the brokeest one here?
Yeah, I have just under like sixty grand, but I work eight hours, six days a week.
All right, uh, yeah, I, I don't think we should spend state money on that for now. I would be, I would be interested in spending state money on, uh, you know, in the future, like Crane said, uh, you know, purchasing new vehicles, right? But like, in terms of like upgrading and shit, no, I don't think so.
What about them buying their own vehicles?
Yeah, can they do that?
That's what I was asking for the towing regulations.
That's part of the conversations I'm having with Slacks.
Oh, yeah. Cause I, if I'm, can put my two cents out, if I'm buying my own vehicle, uh, I have absolutely no issue modifying it with my own money, because at that point, it's my own property.
Well, I mean, surely, surely cops wouldn't steal from each other, right?
Right?
Surely not.
I, I don't think so.
Surely.
I mean, I wouldn't.
Oh, you mean like the vehicles?
Well, every, every car in that motor pool should have some turbo then.
All right. I think we need some paint too to put our call signs on the top, because that's still an issue.
Yeah, there's, there's a whole lot being worked on.
All right.
Hopefully you guys will get a mechanic internally and then it'll all be sorted.
All right.
Was it as far, as far as the towing stuff, I mean, are do, do we wanna just vote on, uh?
Yeah, the boots.
Uh, the boot stuff that we, we just talked about and made the judiciary can like work on the wording of it.
Any, any nays? All right, the eyes have it. Good work.
All right, I'll draft something and I'll circulate to you guys for feedback.
Uh, does, does anyone else have anything they'd like to propose? Because I've got a lot of shit that I need to propose and I just wanna get everything else out of the way.
I have.
Uh, I have one thing. Oh, go ahead.
Yes, oh. I would like to make an amendment to the brandishing of a non-firearm charge. Uh, as it stands, the wording, let me get it for you.
Unlawful for you to draw or exhibit a deadly weapon in a rude, angry or threatening way in the presence of another person and not in defense of self or others.
Correct, so, uh, very often we will show up on a scene somewhere and someone will be running around, uh, with a knife in hand.
It's Reed.
He's not the only one, but yes, that's one person I'm thinking of.
Yep.
And they run around the whole time and they say, I'm not threatening anyone, I'm not threatening anyone, I'm not threatening anyone.
Yeah, pretty much.
Which, I think I I, I made the argument to somebody that if you replace the knife with a gun, uh, people would probably feel a lot more strongly about it. However, I do wanna just add one line, something along the lines of displaying a non-firearm deadly weapon in a public place without legal reason. And then it is unlawful for you to draw or exhibit the deadly weapon in a rude, angry or threatening way in the presence of another person and not in self-defense of others. I don't know how anyone feels about that.
I just wanna play like penetration test here for a second.
Yep.
Uh, what if I'm smart alec criminal number four hundred and thirty-seven? And I see this legislation change and I just decide that instead of carrying a knife, I'm just gonna carry a pipe wrench because you can't claim that it's a deadly weapon all the time. Isn't that kinda defeat the whole law?
Talked about it as well. It's obviously not, it's a work web, I mean, it's, it's weapon you use at work, right?
Yeah, why the fuck would someone be carrying a pipe wrench around like senior buns?
They shouldn't, that's the thing, like, they shouldn't.
Yeah, but how do we regulate that under calling it a weapon? You can't, you can't unanimously guarantee or declare every tool to be a weapon, I don't know.
Yeah, that's the issue, yeah.
If someone's walking around with like, uh, a non-firearm out, can't you just hit them with like disturbing the peace or something, or is that too strict a definition?
No, it doesn't qualify as too strict.
I mean, isn't it, isn't it circumstantial? Like, it's all entirely circumstantial. If someone's walking around with a pipe wrench down the road with no other tools on their.
Well, that's, but that's why the rude, angry or threatening is in there is because you're trying to quantify or qualify an action that by itself is innocuous.
My stance is I like the definition being that way because it makes for interesting court arguments.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Cause, and I, I trust me, I've heard this. I've had people come to me and say, you know, why isn't this work and, uh, I can see arguments for both ways.
What do you guys think about, um, it is unlawful for you to draw or exhibit a potentially deadly weapon?
Oh, good lord. Let's just hold on a second. I, I will cite to, uh, one Delver Lee who entered the city hall some six years ago when he first moved here, uh, and requested to me, uh, no less than thirty times in the span of one hour that I write on his profile that his hands are declared as a deadly weapon because he is trained in several forms of martial arts. So, uh, in terms of that language, sir, that's gonna be a no.
I think as it stands now, if someone's like, I'm not threatening people, um, I think it's, uh, it part of this law already kind of like covers that and that's the, you know, it, it is pretty unanimously rude to hold a, a knife or a pipe wrench in a public place.
Yeah, I think, I think cops could articulate. I think cops could articulate. I agree with Malton. I think it allows for interesting arguments. And also, let's be honest, right? It's, uh, five months, a hundred and ninety dollars. That's less than a third degree speeding ticket at this point in terms of the fine.
True.
So I feel like if the person's actually doing something wrong and they're being, and they're do well, you could probably get them on something else that's more impactful. And if they're not, um, you know, then maybe just let shitheads be shitheads.
Yeah, okay, I, the thing I will say against the speed, well, it's not just Reed. The thing I will say about the brandishing is I get way more people trying to be forehead, uh, you know, nine hundred IQ with the brandishing charge than I ever have a speeding charge.
Really? Then stack the shit out of them on other charges and show them your cleverer than they are.
Yeah, fuck them up.
Put it away, then they're disobeying if they don't, and then you.
I know, maybe you should learn to fight fire with fire, Dakota.
Can I, can I ask one question then?
Can I, can I refer you, Dakota, to improper lane change, failure to use a turn signal?
Yes, I've, we call that the Matt Rhodes doctrine.
Yep, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you the one that I observed. Uh, the Matt, the true Matt Rhodes effect is you pull someone over for failure to use a turn signal, you issue them the ticket, and then when you tell them they're free to go and they merge back onto the road, you hit them again if they don't use the turn signal to merge back into the road, leaving the ticket. That's called a twofer right there.
Okay, uh, but my, my question about the brandishing a non-firearm is, um, is there any subjectivity in rude, angry or threatening if you're the person viewing the individual with the weapon out and you feel threatened by it?
No, so, um, courts use what's called a reasonable person test uh, when developing things that are quote-unquote subjective. So it doesn't go to the individual because, for example, some people are scared of clowns, some people are scared of men with face tattoos with, you know, receding hairlines, some people are scared of, you know, uh, well, really anyone. Uh, so you can't, you know, necessarily do it off that. It has to be the generalized reasonable person.
All right, noted.
I am one with the desk. I, I am the desk man. You're all right, just, uh, stop what you're doing, you'll be fine.
I think you should commit to it. It's your life now.
Okay, uh, are we, uh, what's, what's the haps on this one?
I'm gonna be a no on changing that one, I think. Agreed. Who, who are we at? You got more, Dakota?
I got one, so, yeah, go ahead and go ahead, Michael. Well, we had to talk about this as well. Uh, this is gonna be, uh, this is gonna be one that is like kind of interesting, the, the mask mandate, two point O.
No, uh, Michael.
Huh, okay.
What the fuck, what the fuck's the mask mandate?
Let us tell you a story.
Yeah, if you basically, go on, Dakota, you can probably explain this better than me.
Uh, so from my perspective, uh, many years ago, there used to be a mandate in effect.
We don't have enough cops to do that.
That if you wore a mask that was, uh, if you wore a mask in a public place.
Not for health purposes, right?
No, it didn't matter.
Yeah, it didn't.
Yep.
Be everybody.
So if you were wearing a mask in a public place, uh, you were subj- and not in, and not in your own vehicle, uh, you were subject to stop, be identified, remove the mask and frisk by any PD member anytime.
Hmm.
And.
Basically, gang members wore their shit everywhere and we had to set a policy to stop them from acting like assholes in public.
Uh, is that a problem right now, Dakota?
Uh, I am seeing more and more people wearing masks, uh, every day. However, uh, like, Michael brought it up, I, I would like to see it re-implemented, but to a different degree that doesn't involve police officers, uh, being stabbed, shot or run over with a vehicle every time they try to institute it.
What's, what's the suggestion then?
Michael, would you like to?
Well, removing the frisk part. It's not, it's not unreasonable to, to ask somebody to stop and then remove their mask so you can identify them, I would say.
So basically, the, they, they could still be stopped, they could still be identified, they have to provide that ID. And if they don't, that's when it opens them up to disobeying a peace officer?
Yes.
Correct.
Is there, uh, a charge for, uh, failure to identify?
It, it would be disobeying if they don't.
We are, we are not a stop and ID state as of yet.
Okay.
So I think that was the issue previously was that even if the person stopped, identified themselves and removed the mask, then the officers would still push for.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, they would just constantly push with me. My, the, the, the thing that I did was literally, hey, like, remove your mask or I'm gonna have to frisk you and remove that mask. Um, they usually just remove the mask, I'd ID them and they'd be on their way.
Yeah, and that's how it was intended to go, but, you know.
I'm.
Classic people taking advantage.
Yeah, I'm fine with the concept if you, we remove the frisk, the, the question I would have, and this is be a police procedural standpoint, is what happens when a smart criminal, you know, twenty-four or whatever says, I, I don't have an ID or you can't reasonably ID him, does that open him up to be taken down to MRPD for fingerprinting?
I would vote no.
So then what happens if they say they don't have an ID on them?
I believe we have digital ID, don't we, on our phone? That's not forged.
A digital ID is, I don't think a digital ID should be.
I'm not grumbling, because I, I, you know, the idea of pulling your phone out, I just think it's a slippery slope, uh. If I haven't done anything wrong, and there's not a public safety justification to wearing a mask being linked to violence, uh, then I'm hard pressed to understand why the police powers come into effect, right? So, one of the key principles of a free society is that you should be able to travel freely without, you know, interference from law enforcement unless you are, you know, breaking a law, right? So, using the public roadways and getting pulled over for a ticket, you know, failing to signal, you know, jaywalking, right? But if I'm completely legally walking down the road and I happen to be wearing, you know, face covering and there's no public interest about violence being associated with face coverings or gangs or whatever, right? Uh, then I'm hard pressed to understand why I should grant the police the ability to identify somebody.
Okay. I can see that honestly.
Yeah, that's, that's a fair point.
I mean, like, you know, yeah, so, like, walking into a bank with a mask on.
Yeah, I, I, and I mean, look, uh, I, that's where it started. That's where it started. That's literally where it started. Was it started because people went into banks wearing masks and there was a time where they were fiddling with the security systems and they wanted to be able to run away unidentified if police showed up. But I don't, again, I, I think we're kinda putting the cart before the horse, right? Like, I don't think there's been anything that's occurred that would justify this action. If anything, I think we'd just be alienating the public and kind of, you know, burning some political capital that I think we really, really need right now.
I kind of agree. The only time this will really become useful is if you're trying to identify someone you believe has a warrant or something. And then in that case, they're probably still just gonna try to kill you, so it brings us back to what you're trying to avoid, which is cops getting run over, shot, whatever the hell.
Hmm.
I don't know, I think, I think, I think it could, it could be a viable thing. But I, I, I wouldn't be comfortable putting my name on a vote until we had something to say to the public. Here's why I voted for it because of this extreme public crisis, right? Because then, like, you know, back in the day when the mask mandate got put in, it was very easy for me to say to civilians, look, we put it in because, hell, this will stop you from getting, you know, kidnapped just for walking on the street by a gang full of people wearing bandanas in a car or whatever.
I guess my question to Dakota is, you, you said you were seeing a lot of people, is that causing problems for you all in the police, or is it just?
Uh, I mean, not, I guess not being able to identify people in the commission of a crime because they have a mask on would be.
But if they're committing a crime, are they then just gonna show you their ID? Like, I think at that point, you know, they, that, that's a, they're already committed to the crime.
It's an iffy thing, though, because if people wearing a mask and just walking around using their mask as their cover, if they have a hunch, if the cops have a hunch that somebody committed a crime, asking them for their ID and to take off the mask is gonna force them into either a fight or flight mode. They will run off and try to hide or they will do what they're always gonna do and pull a knife or a gun. I'm fine with putting this on the back burner. It was just something we thought about.
No, I think it's a good suggestion. Once we get a justification is my concern.
Yeah, let's, let's review this, uh, in the last couple of weeks in our, uh, tenure.
Okay, that works.
I think that's fair, yeah.
So no need to vote on that. Um, there is something I wanted to talk about in, in the realm of voting. What do you guys think about making our voting records public?
Well, I already said they were gonna be, by the way.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I actually, uh, I said that, uh, I was gonna invite Ursula to the meetings to record and or take notes.
Well, I was also.
I, I don't know, I just, I never got around to it because I got busy with some other shit.
How do you guys feel about press conferences?
I, I don't like the idea of meetings being recorded, but, uh, the results, I, I think is fair.
Yeah, I think a press conference after the fact would be great, just because sometimes we may have to discuss, uh, certain, uh, to be that person.
Intangibles, yeah, yeah, I got you. That's fair, yeah.
My idea with like press conferences, like the whole, I, I've always found them quite appealing and it's always been something that I think, um, when I was in the PD, it lacked a lot of, uh, wa- was that communication with the public. And state announcements and stuff are great, but, um, uh, I, I think a press conference would be really cool.
Yeah, I think it was a lot better taking these notes than I am.
That communication being, being physical, like face-to-face. Um, but that might just be a me thing rather than like an overall thing.
I, I don't, I don't mind either way. I'm fine with feeding Ursula the TLDR after the meeting of the outcome, so she can publish them and make people aware. I'm also fine with the press conference. I mean, I won't participate because I don't really like, you know, the fucking cameras and shit, but, uh, I'm happy either way.
Hey, I mean, if we're, uh, if we're like taking a voter discussing, I, I don't, there shouldn't be any cameras or anyone, let's say unaffiliated, like in this room here, but like the, the results of it in our votes, I, I think should be public information.
Um, so i- is this officially written down somewhere? That there, the, the voting record of the council of eight will be publicly available and published?
No, it was just something that when I was formulating with the federal government, I made clear that was, it was meant to be public. It was meant to be, the action should not be, you know, hidden and secret.
Okay, so let, let's, uh, let's all vote on this then so that we can get it in and written down somewhere for people to see. Uh, any nays?
All right, the eyes have it, excellent.
Actually, I have an idea for, uh, something that's almost like two birds, one stone. Um, uh, I think obviously this stuff should be accessible in the MTT, uh, here at City Hall. But I think, um, another option would be with the DOJ app, it could be a, a tab, a re- like a, um, so obviously you could see in the DOJ app which judges and whatnot.
What DOJ app?
Well, in, in the future, a DOJ app.
Sorry.
I mean, we, we need a DOJ app, um, let's get one first. Yeah, no, I was just gonna suggest that it'd be, it'd be cool if we could have like, um, legislation changes in that tab of that app, but also, um, uh, it could say, um, like, what, what things have been voted on as well. Obviously, that's for the future, but it's just an idea to toss in there.
Excellent idea.
Also be the thing, uh, like yesterday, Max, uh, where we record state announcements.
Yeah, uh, I was, I was gonna tack on to that, um, because I. Yeah, uh, I was, I was gonna tack on to that, um, because I, I think Crane's the first person who mentioned a DOJ app to me, uh, right? Was it you?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, we, uh, Eda, me and everyone else, um, realized that having a, a section of that app to essentially record state announcements for people who were not around to hear or see them would be a good idea, and also a new legislation tab.
Yeah, so I'm, uh, on my phone here, talking to the technician, uh, and it seems like, uh, the plan is to uh, add a report category in the MDT, one for state announcements and one for city council documents. So I would give you guys access to the city council documents, which means prior to coming to the meetings and throughout the week, whenever you get proposals finished, you could throw a draft proposal in there, so we could review before we get here, so the means could be shorter. Because we'll, I'll have reviewed the material a little better. Uh, and second, we have a record of our decisions as well as the outcomes, which can then be published. Uh, in terms of the app, I, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna tell you right now, uh, it's, it's hard enough to get the app actually done, I don't think we're gonna get the functionality you're talking about.
Well, okay.
Yeah, oh yeah, it'll be public MDT.
Good.
Okay, I will work with the technician on that, uh, that stuff.
Yeah, uh, okay. Does anyone else have anything else that they would like to propose currently?
Uh, I gotta bring up one thing, I'm not proposing it necessarily, it's something that, uh, and I've talked to Max about this a little bit, there are gonna be some things from time to time that were intended to be codified in law, but just haven't had the chance to become yet. Um, one of those things is, uh, uh, weight systems for the trucking industry. So one of the things, regulations wise, that is gonna be emerging, uh, is there will be a commercial driver's license that the clerks will issue. Um, this will allow people to legally drive, uh, you know, eighteen wheelers, things like that, so the Grime, uh, Pounder, the Packer, the larger group six vehicles. Uh, and part of that is, there will be tickets going in for, uh, being overweight. Right now, there is no regulatory system for the trucking, uh, system. So essentially, they can just load up with, you know, to the brim with boxes, be completely unsafe, and there's no punishment outside of the normal speeding regulation. So I don't know, I don't know when that's actually gonna be implemented, but, um, I'm working on it now with PD uh, and with the folks that handle the, the truck, uh, regulations.
Is that, so would that also classify those, the giant armored group six trucks?
Yes, yes, the group, anything, anything that is gonna be classed as a commercial vehicle, so, uh, you know, box trucks, uh, with, you know, multiple suspensions, or, I don't know, I don't know vehicle terms, y'all know what I'm talking about.
So you, 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 Craig, you're suggesting that we, uh, that, uh, you're, you're essentially going to be adding a new charge for this?
So, uh, yeah, it was always intended to be the case, but we're still working on some of the MDT functionality to getting the license established.
Oh, okay.
So it's, and I'm also trying to work with PD to make sure that they, uh, are properly trained on how to estimate the weight of the truck. By looking at the suspension, how low it's riding, things like that. So once those things are figured out, uh, then several charges will be implemented, which will be traffic citations essentially, so PD will have the authority to, much like a weigh station, right? They can stop a commercial truck and just say, hey, I'm just gonna check your load, looks like you're riding a little low, that kind of thing. Um, and then they'll be able to do a spot check on the vehicle. If it is overweight, the person will get an infraction points, uh, and there will be some kind of strike system against the commercial license. So if someone is abusing the weight regulations and skirting them, and they do so in a prolific manner, uh, then their commercial license can be revoked and they will be suspended from driving the larger vehicles for a short period of time.
I like that.
But I, again, this is all like, you know, I got a bunch of coordination to do with a bunch of folks and it's not, it's not gonna go in tomorrow. This is maybe a couple of weeks out.
I- is this like a huge problem? Is like, is like a safety issue, like, what, what, where's this coming from?
Safety issue.
Yeah, safety issue and also the intent, uh, well, the contracts that the government has with these state sponsored companies in the rebuilding phase. You know, we're allowing companies like Grime to operate in the state and to employ people. Uh, and there needs to be some kind of oversight and regulation of their activities, right now, it's kind of the wild west, you know, you get a, you know, semi truck from your boss down at the docks and then drive up to Sandy and load it up till there's packages falling out the back and no one has any say about it.
And flying down the road at ridiculously high speeds, carrying that much weight, they're literally just going to murder people.
Yeah, I see people drifting.
Combination.
Saying, that's crazy, yeah.
Uh, I just have one question, if they're gonna be specialty licenses, does that mean if they get pulled over while they're on duty, they'll be getting points on the, the specialty license?
There will be some kind of strike system for that license.
Okay, and if they.
Instead of, so instead of like, so for example, hypothetically, what's been discussed so far, uh, with the people who run, uh, Grime would be if, uh, the, uh, person with a commercial license is caught overweight, uh, strike would go on their MDT profile, and if they received X number of strikes, their commercial license would be suspended for a Y period of time.
Understood, okay, that's all I was wondering.
And that would be in cooperation with Grime, so if the person goes down there and tries to start up a contract to go take an eighteen wheeler up to Polito, uh, they would not be allowed to, they would have to literally go to, uh, you know, drive the little, the little, uh, speedster vans around.
Uh, how do you determine the, uh, the weight?
So, that's what I'm working on with PD, um, Grime has internal regulations. So there's a certain amount of weight that is like the maximum the truck can handle before it basically, you know, the axle snaps.
Yeah, I, I've, I've, I've done Grime.
Right, so, uh, there will be, uh, training for PD so that they can approach the vehicle from the side, inspect the suspension, and they'll be able to estimate, uh, the weight. And if there's, let's say, reasonable suspicion that the truck's overweight based on how low it's riding, then they would have the legal authority to open up the back and, uh, inspect, you know, the amount back there.
Yeah, uh, Mayor, I can tell you that I was at the old city vault the other day as, uh, one of those giant group six vans was being, uh, unloaded. And, uh, every time they take a pallet out, you can physically see the, uh, the truck coming up. Yeah, in real time.
Really?
Yes, I, I, sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if you guys are aware of that or not, yeah, you can visibly identify the, how low something is riding.
So if it's dragging on the ground, it's probably got a lot of stuff in it.
So the, these trucks are like actually scraping when they go over scrap bumps?
Yes.
Oh my god.
That's crazy, okay.
All right.
No, you made a hell of a lot for me.
Let's take a, uh, five minute break before we get into the ten things that I need to talk to you guys about.
All right.
Um, I, we, just, I don't, fucking, I gotta use the bathroom, so.
Smoke them if you got them.
I too have more stuff.
Yeah, I was gonna bring up some things, nothing's concrete, though.
Oh, good. I, I'll go, I'll go last, um, because my shit's kind of dense.
All right.
Sounds good.
All right.
Don't use my office, Max.
Yeah, maybe.
Max, no.
Oh, no.
Uh-oh.
You have a question?
He got him house trained.
He, he, yesterday I caught him pissing in my fucking office.
All right. Oh, that's a Uprum.
That does sound like a Uprum.
Yeah.
Can we hit him with public indecency?
Regulations, can we call him like, Willie's something, I, I gotta build some goodwill with this man back up again.
What?
Billy Glory is like one of the best tow people in this city, and he, he's actually been trying to pioneer a lot of this boot stuff.
Oh, all right, I actually, uh, I had him tow a vehicle from PD the other day and still working on the tow system, apparently there's some kinks they're working out.
Yes, yeah, he, he's, he's my go-to for, for towing issues right now.
Okay.
Uh, Chief Justice, I have a question specifically about some charges in the MDT. Uh, mostly about contraband and a few other, like the PD equipment, uh, like what qualifies as PD equipment in the MDT, is it better for me to request those be removed, some of those individually? Uh, some of the items in there, because they don't exist, some of them, as far as I'm aware. Not everything, but some of them.
Just email me a bullet point list of exactly what you have in your capacity to, uh, have.
Okay, should I do that, is, should I get with Cantor as well for what they have at the hospital?
Yep.
Okay, and then for the contraband list, as far as I'm aware, nothing on that list is in circulation right now.
Yeah, same thing, uh, if you think there should be an update to a charge, give me a, win PD's experience, what you're, you're dealing with.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't overstepping any processes here by sending it to you via email.
Nope, just give me, uh, give me the info.
Okay, perfect, appreciate it.
Yeah, all good, huh, Juno?
Yeah.
Yep. You know, Old Yeller me?
What are you talking about?
I already know.
Okay, so you don't like some of them, huh?
You want, you wanna push me off a mountain?
Wait, what, what do you mean a mountain?
I know all about your law. All good, huh? All good, huh? You hear about this on Michael? Spoiler alert, uh, they want to classify everyone of a certain age into a labeled group with a proper noun. Uh, and then evict them since from society forcefully, AKA mid-sommar.
I, I do not agree with that one, okay, I don't know where the fuck that one came from, I feel like it came from James Randle.
Yes, that's something.
Okay, besides that, every, everything else is good, okay?
You know, you, you, you ain't going far enough, we should make them all wear armbands, so we know which ones are which.
Oh my god, Craig.
Yeah.
Look, I, 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 that is, that is, I just wanna make it known, that is a Max thing, not a me thing.
All right.
Even discuss that at all.
You're gonna have me to give up on my children, I don't know how to feel about that.
Oh my god, Michael, I sweat. The fact that you care though, it, it means that it's good, because you care enough to actually like pay the, however much fee it is. Which would then put money into the state account.
I was not paying attention.
I'm fine with that.
I've had other conversations with people as well, and they've been hooked by it, which means that they also care, to the point that, that they would also pay.
Abdul's got four different, five, five warrants.
Hmm, I'm good. Oh, there's a hearing going on downstairs.
I, I want, I wanna start a family tree, so we have this shit recorded for the DOJ and, um,
Oh, that too, yeah.
Alex looks so cute, look at us.
Yeah, good outfit choice.
No, right, these are my, this is my favorite skirt for sure.
Yeah, this is like, put this on because, you know, everybody usually wears that, like, that one outfit, you know, it's like, oh, it's that one business outfit.
Why, which business outfit?
You know, the high waist one, the high waist pants with the nice ass.
Oh, with the black ones that are fled a little bit?
Yeah.
And then what with the, um?
With the matching top.
Yeah, yeah, which one, the shirt or like the, the tank top sort of one?
Both.
Oh, yeah.
I was wearing it, I'm like, yeah, I mean, I, I guess I look good in it, but I'm, I'm really tired of fucking seeing this outfit worn by everybody.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's my, that's my favorite outfit for sure. And she always comments on it when I have my hair up, uh, because you can see the crease, you know, the crease I'm talking about on the top. He's like, pull your fucking shirt down. It really bugs them when I wear this.
Too bad, so sad, right?
Right? Craig, can I smoke in here?
Uh, I smoke in the elevator, if you wanna do that.
Can I smoke in here?
I don't care.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What are you saying, Alex?
I'm having a really rough, I, I only woke up like two hours ago.
Oh, fuck, what time, I mean, not same. What time did you go to sleep?
Eight in the morning. Rough sleep.
I went to bed, I think, at nine Eastern, nine AM Eastern, ten AM Eastern.
Yeah.
It's always the same question.
Woke up, I was like, oh shit. Took me like a good twenty minutes to wake up. The meeting, it was five minutes till the meeting started. Yeah, I was sleeping, resting. Laying in bed.
What a mood.
Yeah.
I was playing Red Dead.
Yeah, I wasn't even doing anything, I was just trying to sleep.
Check out like weapons licenses yesterday. Brought that up real quick when I talked to him.
Uh, we talked about weapons license a little bit, my opinion honestly is, um, I think I'll be comfortable issuing weapons licenses to civilians when, uh, if and when people start illegally importing, uh, unlicensed firearms. So for example, if, you know, all of a sudden people start, you know, trafficking crates of, you know, fucking, you know, P two fifty's into the country, and there's criminals running around with firearms everywhere. Uh, then I could see like a public safety need to have civilians own firearms, but my concern is if I give civilian licenses before that issue with criminal guns, then essentially, I'm just opening it up to a cost benefit equation, right? So I'm criminal, there are four and thirty-five, and I say, okay, the weapons license is seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, how many guns can I buy and give to my friends before it gets removed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, and I do an equation of, is that worth it, and how much are the fines when those guns get caught? And honestly, uh, given the fact that people are already risking what amounts to close to fifty thousand dollars for robbing a cop and having.
I forgot about that aspect, yeah, that is a thing that happens.
Abuse a civilian license, even if I made it seventy-five or a hundred K.
Cough, moon.
When you put it like that, it makes sense, because if you do it as well, you're, you're, you're putting a target on them as well. Because they don't have access.
Yeah, everyone's gonna try to hunt them down.
Yeah, so if you have access, I guess, they, they won't care too much about it and you don't have that target, that makes sense, I'm not against that.
I, I, you know, again, I think we should do things when there's a demonstrable need, not because there's a want.
Yeah.
I like that. How do you feel about, um, people with families having, part of like a nonprofit business sort of thing? No, okay.
People with families should own businesses.
I agree.
Yeah, same.
Yeah, yeah.
Same.
Yeah, I agree.
Hear ye, hear ye, council of eight hereby re-adjourns. Hooray.
Hello.
Huzzah.
Huzzah.
Reconvene's, I mean.
Am I sitting down? Am I sitting down?
You are.
What a strange question, Juno.
I know, I just, I just, I, yeah, okay, anyway.
Wait, was that a wacky tobacco cigarette?
Yeah.
Me?
Wait, why are you saying it so many times over and over?
One of those jazz cigarettes?
Yes, I'm saying.
You boofing, you candy flipping, you son of a bitch.
Okay, so I heard Philippa, Philippa say that she had something?
I have something and I know she does too, yeah?
Okay.
Uh, I just have discussions essentially, I haven't actually plotted all this out yet, um, there were two things I've already talked to Malton about, that I want to try to come up with. Um, one is some form of patient privacy laws, uh, that are going to be way less stringent than what people might be used to in, uh, other districts, uh, because that would be terrible. Um, so I might try to come up with something for that. Um, the other thing, this is more of a question for Ukraine, um, it's been proposed a concept of medical report request subpoenas, so essentially, um, So essentially, um, essentially, in situations where they can't get uh, confirmation from the patient that it's okay for the officers to get a report. They'd have to submit a subpoena on the probable cause of why they actually need the report. Essentially to protect, you know, people's rights and everything, because a lot of that information just stays posted on the docket. Uh, yeah, the big, the big thing is, um, a victim of a violent crime, um, it used to be in the past. If a victim of a violent crime, um, came into the hospital, cops could request that report and just get it immediately, uh, without ever speaking to the patient. Sometimes the patient wouldn't even go into the ICU, they would just be out and about, um, but they still wouldn't even be aware that the cop is requesting this report. Uh, and then that information would get posted on the docket, just someone's private medical information, uh, and, and they weren't even aware. Uh, and we've actually seen this happen a few times, uh, so essentially I want to prevent that happening, um, same with lawyers as well. They should actually have to try to get those.
Uh, I don't disagree with what you said about shorter. As long as you don't try to implement HIPAA and you keep it to like a page or two, I'm, I'm okay.
Oh god, yeah, no, I, uh, if you know anything about how I do things, uh, I would like it to, one, um, not be something that is too heavy criminally, it should not be something where people are getting arrested because they accidentally slip up or something. Um, just kind of a framework on things, um, like, things like putting someone's, uh, medical records on the docket, that should, you know, that should mean something if you're doing that, uh, it, it would be a lot simpler than, uh, than HIPAA is for sure. So, uh, you're open to the subpoenas I do? I can speak to judges as bad as well, but since you are, you know, kind of the top dog there, figured I'd bring it up to you.
I'm for it.
Uh, yeah, what's so just that cops would need to subpoena for records?
Uh, pretty much, um, I'm still plotting out exactly in which cases, um. Our initial thought was they come to us and request the report and they explain to us why they need it. If we deny that, um, then they can take it to a judge, so it would be, it almost never goes to them, um. But it, it can if, you know, they really need them, if that makes sense.
Hey, uh, I'm gonna be honest with you, I have a pretty good standing relationship with, uh, Mr. Shaw over there. So, if he's signing off on something, it's good with me.
Hell yeah, okay.
Mine, uh, mine is actually a, a little bit related, uh, specifically records, um, so a lot of people have come up to me and with the uh, notebooks that have been, uh, imported into the city in the past couple of weeks, a lot of people are, are using these for uh, either records or just ideas, um, for like, you know, potential business proposals, um, contracts before they reach the phone, uh, et cetera, et cetera. Um, there have been some concerns that have been voiced to me and I believe Dakota can correct me on this, but if someone is just carrying around a notebook, the police can search that, you know, as part of their inventory process, like, it's not just that they have a notebook on them, it's they have a notebook on them and inside is XYZ. I, is, are we wanting to give any kind of protection to potentially? Let's just say, information notebooks?
I feel like they should need a warrant to search someone's notebook, right?
Well, that's what I'm asking everyone.
Here's, okay, so here's, this has been, I've discussed this several times with PD Command, lawyers, judges, whatever, so here's where we're at. Uh, couple legal principles, I'll make this as brief as I can, so, uh, when you have a warrant, the warrant needs to list specifically what you are searching for. So if I have a warrant to search Malton's house because he's a drug dealer and I caught him dealing drugs and I think he has more drugs, uh, and specifically in question, I'm looking for like marijuana, right? Um, I wouldn't, you know, uh, I wouldn't look in like, you know, the cor, the corner of his wallet or something. I, I would look for areas where like marijuana could reasonably be stored. Um, in, in the case of what we're talking about, there wouldn't be much reason that a cop would go into someone's house, see a book, open the book and start reading it. They might turn the book upside down and shake the pages to see if any marijuana fell out of the book or there is a hidden compartment, but reading the book would probably be a violation of the, the terms of the search, because it wouldn't be in plain view. So the other legal principle is search incident to lawful arrest. Which means when you are placed under arrest for a crime and you are processed into the jail at LSPD into the cells and you are sent to prison in Bolingbrook, all of your possessions can be inventoried and searched by the PD. Now, the reason for that search is safety and accountability, right? Much like towing a car, you inventory the car because you need to be safe and you need to be insured that, let's say, someone can't say later, I had two diamond coated Rolexes in that car and now they're missing the PD stole. So, when you inventory all someone's items, you're looking for contraband to make sure they can't bring it into the jail and you're also looking to make sure that you're accountable for what they had on them. The part where I get stuck is, is I don't know if reading a book is a search. Uh, the most parallel argument that we have would be a phone. And the argument that, for example, Rami made is, well, if someone's phone gets catalogued and then the cops wanna get data off the phone, they typically have to file a search warrant.
Right.
And that is correct, but again, the reason for that is because phones are typically password protected, which means that people have taken measures to keep the information safe and secret. Whereas if it's just a loose leaf notebook, uh, then you get into discussions about, well, what's the difference between a loose leaf notebook and a piece of paper that's folded up in their pocket? So if a cop can unfold a piece of paper in their pocket and read what's on the piece of paper, what's the difference between opening a book? Uh, so we get into a lot of really minor nuance and minutia of law that in my opinion is not best served by an argument that I make in a room with you guys, but probably best served by court cases through common law. So for example, if someone's book is seized during processing and read by the PD, uh, then I think that person should sue the PD for an unlawful search and seizure. And then the courts can decide based on the circumstances how the law should go. But in terms of legislating it right now, I think it's far too nuanced and complicated to be worthwhile.
Uh, I think, um, I think you're right. I, I just wanna confirm something and so, and under our current legal protections, uh, some, if, if a notebook is in a house at least, the, the warrant would have to cover reading that notebook for them to go through it. Okay, then that, I think that's a good baseline.
Yeah, and, and again, it's so nuanced and it's such a small circumstance of law that I just, uh, trying to set policy ahead of time, I think, is a fool's errand.
Sure. Um, the, the last thing on my list is, uh, civilian oversight board, I mean, Crane, we obviously talked a, a bit about that um, yesterday, this was after our meeting, unfortunately, Dakota, um.
Oh.
Is, yeah, is there, um, is there anything that we like as, as a council need to decide with the civilian oversight board in terms of like eligibility or anything like that, or?
Yes, uh, I was gonna allow the council to decide that in terms of, um, so the way that I envisioned the civilian oversight board and the way it was constructed was there would be the head of the bar who would chair the board and then there would be four civilians, uh, elected to positions underneath the head of the bar. Um, I had not, outside of saying no felonies, I hadn't really come up with a criteria for how we would allow those people to run for election. So I don't know if you guys have any ideas, maybe you wanna make it no arrestable offenses, maybe you wanna make it so they, you know, I, I, I don't know, I, I don't know what it would be.
No felonies, I, I, I don't know how else you would determine someone's eligibility, I mean, obviously they can't be dumb as fuck, right, but?
Well, it's a popular vote, right? Or is that?
Like, like a public vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um.
Also, what about a violent misdemeanor?
I think I could agree that no violent misdemeanors.
Yeah, that's fair.
No violent crimes, no felonies.
Are we married to the idea of them being voted in?
Not necessarily, the only reason I was, uh, I was keen to the idea originally was because my vision was is that if this is a police oversight function, uh, the way that the public would best embrace it is if they truly knew that actual members of the public were on the board. Uh, if it's just a bunch of government types, you know, then I don't think it carries the same weight.
Hmm.
But no, I'm not, I'm, I'm open to suggestion any other way.
Yeah, like, it, it's like, I don't have a good idea, but the, 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 the thought of a popular vote, it just, it doesn't sit well with me. Because people will just do stupid shit for the memes and it just won't be taken seriously.
Oh, I mean, maybe, maybe, maybe the position should be very well described, because it's not, I mean, it's not gonna be super fun, I mean, they're literally gonna sit in there and listen to testimony for a couple hours at a time.
Yeah.
If you make the, uh, the qualifications very strict, I feel like you could help filter out some of those issues right off the bat if it were to be a popular vote.
Yeah, but then what qualifications?
I agree with you, I'm just.
No violent, no violent crimes, no felonies, I think weeds out a lot of undesirables. And I think if people have clean records, uh, and they are undesirable, they're probably more worried about whatever the hell they're not getting caught for right now anyway.
What about, uh, I mean, it's in the name, right, civilian oversight board, but there are, let's say, uh, niche government rules that might be, uh, in between, you know, the, the traditional ones such as a police officer and a doctor. Um, you know, like, for example, I, I don't know if she has any interest, but could a county clerk run for this board? Could a lawyer run for this board?
My, my opinion was that this was to be actual civilian.
Yeah.
Not people who hold government positions.
So, any?
Thank god.
So if you're, uh, so, okay, I, I, I'm fine with that, I'm just so like even, okay, no, yeah, I, yeah, I'm trying to think how to phrase it. You can't be paid by the state, basically, unless it's a state-run job.
The whole idea is that these are unbiased folks from all walks of life who have an interest in seeing the police be held accountable. If you start introducing government employees and things like that, you start getting into, you know, biases and perceived biases and all that.
Will, will the civilian oversight board have access to important documents that allow them to actually conduct their job properly?
So, uh, I have access to everything PD ever has written and will write. Uh, in terms of the civilian oversight board, uh, if a case is taken on by the board and Malton reviews it and finds there is merit in his preliminary review to take on the case, uh, then he will request corresponding documentation to that case from me and then I will provide, uh, whatever is relevant, as long as it is not tied to an ongoing investigation. And, and again, I will make sure that those claims are valid if they are made.
What, what are the efforts we're making to make sure that the, uh, the local police force are literate? Cause I've, I've encountered at least two cops who have claimed that they cannot read.
Who was that?
Dakota?
Uh, Bones and, uh, who else? The plumbers guy.
Bones can read, he just can't write.
Uh, okay.
He's a hunting pecker, he writes like thirty words a minute.
Yeah, Bones might just be sage farming, honestly.
Oh, you think so? Okay, um, good, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Um, the, the, it goes back to civilian, I, I guess I wanna specifically get to, uh, lawyers then, because they, they've always been, uh, the redheaded stepchild of, of government employees, I'm fine with there being no other lawyers on the board, we don't want it to be a lawyer oversight board. However, I believe in our current penal code, which is a holdover, they, they are not classified as government employees.
Apparently they fucking are, cause they're taking our fucking money, man!
Yeah, they are.
Are they? I, I thought kidnapping a government employee didn't list lawyers.
No, 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 for the purposes of those charges, no, but they're on the payroll.
Right, okay.
Lawyers, lawyers are a hybrid only because they are one of the few government positions, uh, subsidized positions that can hold a private and a public interest at the same time. For example, you sign in as a public defender, you take every cell rep that comes to you, you don't have a choice. However, if you also want to take on clients who pay you a hundred thousand dollars to sue their wife for a divorce or whatever, then you can do that as well. So they both are and they are.
Alright, well, going back to eligibility for this, this, uh, board, I mean, civilians, I think we're, we're all pretty agreeing on that, but, uh, anyone have any ideas other than a popular vote? Like, do they have to? Can they be vetoed by the council or, or, or anyone after the fact, if we don't?
Why don't we do a popular vote? Where you couldn't pick, why don't we do a popular vote where you can pick multiple choice? And we take the top eight and we pick four.
And you could do an interview process.
Yeah, that's, that's not bad.
Yeah, do interviews like we did for Treasure.
Uh, uh, are, are we voting on this? I don't, I don't think so, right? Actually, we could, yeah, we could.
We're voting on the way that we assemble the board, yes.
Uh, do we have good, good notes on this right now? Alex?
Uh, so I mean, you're, you're voting on?
Speak up!
You're voting on a potential popular vote, multiple choice. And then the selection would probably be around eight, uh, if that many people apply and then potentially moving forward for interviewing them?
Yep, and we, we pick four from the eight.
I, I, I would like, just, just in case, uh, you know, just as, as the mayor has like a, a tiebreaker vote in legislative matters, if it's a four-four vote on a civilian oversight board matter, I think head of bar should get the tiebreaker for who gets on the, uh, the actual board at the end in that case.
Agreed. I'm okay with that, makes sense to me.
Seems fair, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, any nays on the, the matter of election of people in the, uh, civilian oversight board?
It is passed unanimously, good work. Cool, I'll get that written up and drafted as well.
Uh, another concern that I just realized, um, the, the reckless evading fine is going to be lower than the, uh, the highest speeding fine right now. If we go through with the, uh, the speeding changes.
Yeah, unfortunately. Charges, I'd be happy to.
Unfortunately, a lot of charges are gonna be low now, because the way that, uh, we established the fines, uh, during the restructuring was we did a blanket forty percent cut to all fines.
Right.
So doubling, uh, the speeding fines is going to make them out of proportion with a lot of things.
Well, my, 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 my point was, do we want to make it proportionate?
I think we should probably, maybe we should rem, remove, adjust them down a little bit.
What, what, adjust what down?
How about this?
The speeding fines, rather than go through all the rest of the charges.
Um, did you already update them, by the way?
Yes.
Good work, um, I was just thinking about popping reckless evading at one thousand, you know?
Uh, so here would be my, my only thing is if you go to the charges and then you go just on the default view, then you scroll down to, uh, what is it? Uh, the operation of a vehicle section, if you go all the way down there, you're gonna see that outside of like street racing and organizing a street race, uh, it's, you're gonna be hard pressed to, uh, to find a fine that's, that's relatable to current speeding fines.
Okay.
It's cause like evading, for example, is less than a third degree speeding ticket. So my suggestion is that we're probably better off adjusting the speeding tickets down than we are adjusting everything else up.
I, I still like the, the speeding fines being at, at where they're at, I mean, if people are going to flee to avoid a speeding ticket, they, they still get the, it's not stacking to say you were speeding and evading, cause speeding was the initial reason for the stop. I also think if we're looking at all these traffic related fines, the most common one people do is the speeding one, like, we're, we're not worried about people not using their turn signal or, you know, running a red light. It's about people who are speeding through the city and they should be dinged harshly for that.
I, I have no fine, I have no problem saying that we think that speeding fines need to be excessively harsh because we're giving people a lot of leeway, right, increasing the speeds.
Yeah.
Just be aware that as a city council member, you will probably get either someone from PD or some civilian being like, why the fuck, you know, is the third degree speeding ticket more than evading? And that makes no sense.
Well, yeah, that's why, that's why I just wanted to, to raise the speeding related ones to kind of like be in step with that.
SIM card?
I, I, I know, I know it's more work, but I like, I'm willing to do the work, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm actually, i- if the mayor would like, I'd be happy to like have a sit down with you where we can go over charges and look at which ones.
So, okay, well, this is a whole separate topic now, so.
Yeah.
So we're saying that we want to raise the fines for all evading and speeding related charges.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
To, to be in step with the, uh, the speeding changes that just happened.
Okay, um.
How many charges are we talking about?
So with the absence of street racing and organizing a street race, uh, the the parking and the non- the parking and the non, uh, at speed charges such as illegal turn, failure stop, underage parking, proper identification, off-road, window tint, failure signal misuse, all those would stay the same.
Right.
Right.
Driving on the wrong side, same illegal passing, negligent driving would probably need to go up.
Mm-hmm.
So negligent driving gets doubled.
Mm-hmm.
Evading gets doubled, hit and run gets doubled, DWI gets doubled.
Mm-hmm.
Felony hit and run, requisite evading, reckless driving and operating is suspended.
Perfect.
Okay, I will go through and do all that now.
Thank you, Chief Justice.
Yeah, and I will add that to the legislation, so I'll say updated speed limits, please note in accordance to these limit increases, the ranges and fines for the accompanying speeding citations have been narrowed and increased respectively. Um, in addition, all moving violations have been increased.
Perfect.
All right, sounds good.
Because people driving like assholes really needs to be like
Yes. It's a huge issue. Every single injury we have pretty much is a car accident currently.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
This'll, this'll be a good source of money for the state too.
Very good. Okay, I'll get all that set.
Okay, um, uh, we're guessing Dakota?
Uh, so I would just request, and I don't know how everyone else feels, uh, vehicle registration fraud is not currently something that we have seen.
Why didn't we do the city council thing in three point oh, fuck?
Like it to be accompanied by a increase on license points, because that is, it stands now, it's only time and fine and no points on your license if you commit vehicle registration fraud.
Uh, the only problem with that is that you, it's not an operating ticket. So for example, you can get vehicle registration fraud for a parked car. And I don't know how we could justify points on a license when the person wasn't doing anything, driving the car.
I was gonna make an argument, but I think I'll email you about it then. Cause I don't know how to articulate it properly.
Sure.
Okay.
Anyone else before we get to the dense part?
Yish.
Uh, Mr. Simone?
Uh, stand your ground is a bit iffy.
Crane, Crane, Crane's an expert on standing your ground.
You noticed that, huh?
Too harsh, too lenient, what are, what are you saying by iffy?
You, it's hard to justify clapping back basically from how it's read currently, or am I incorrect? It's hard to actually do something. If somebody breaks into your property, you are not really allowed to do much.
I feel like every time I go on a senior buns seller, they get out on stand your grounds, like I
So, stand your ground currently reads a person can use force to defend themselves or associates in their vicinity when they actually and reasonably believe they're in danger of serious bodily harm or death. However, a person is required to take reasonable steps such as stepping back or walking away, they're consistent with the person's own safety, try to avoid the necessity of taking someone's life. Soon as the imminent danger has passed, persons are required to inform authorities what has transpired. Um, so if I was you and someone broke into my house, I would articulate that I was already in my house, so I had nowhere else to retreat. Uh, and I believed that if they were brazen enough to break into my house, uh, you know, despite locks or alarms or whatever, then, you know, I have no telling, you know, what they're willing to do. Uh, and I reasonably feared for my life, especially if I warned them audibly that I was armed and had a gun and they persisted in intruding.
Okay.
I think, I think I could articulate that pretty well.
People trying to use stand your ground to defend like their grime trucks or their group six trucks. Well, you know, that's, you have the option to run away and leave the loot behind. Um, and honestly, that's just a risk that you have to accept and take.
Yeah, well, I, I feel like that's state property anyways. They, in theory, they don't lose anything by saving themselves. Yeah.
Or a reason to take a life, so.
No, I agree with that.
You know, see it that way, but yeah, that's not just how that works. That's the risk you take at making so much more money. Honestly, if I'm going to be very blunt about it.
Well, this also comes back to like people not being smart about the way they drive a T-six truck and, and conduct business, but.
I mean, though, though, and I, I intentionally, when, uh, when I mocked up this constitution, I removed the provision that talks about defending property.
Right.
So the old stand your ground, you were able to defend property. Uh, now it's just serious bodily harm or death.
All right. Wouldn't you be able to ask, like, if we use Rita as an example, like with the knife thing, where he's, he pulls a knife, but he's saying that he's not gonna do anyone harm? He's just there, you know, doing his thing. Wouldn't he be able to do that as well? Or would you, like, the, the second he breaks into your property or forces his way into your property, he could still say that he's not there to harm you? Could that become an issue?
And hear his voice now.
Uh, so it'd be whether you believe him or not. Uh, it'd be whether you reasonably and actually believe. So for example, um, if, you know, someone breaks into your house and you're warning them that you've got a gun and you'll defend yourself and they say, oh, I'm not here for, uh, you, I'm just here for the TV. Uh, and then you see like, you know, them spreading out and surrounding the house. I wouldn't believe them. I'd start shooting.
Fair enough.
Uh, and I think that'd be pretty reasonable belief.
Right. Well, that, if that's the case, then I got nothing to add to that one.
My, the ti- and I will tell you, there have been very few times when, uh, I have found someone to violate stand your ground. Almost always it falls under the example of the threat is leaving and the person fires out of vengeance or spiked. So for example, you get your, uh, like, um, who was it? Was it, uh, was it a lawyer? It was somebody five or six years ago, um, who was hanging out with a friend of theirs. Somebody walks up, somehow had lockpick their truck when they weren't looking. The person gets in the driver's seat and starts to drive away. The person and their companion jump out of the way of the truck, the truck goes speeding down the road. The person pulls out a gun and starts popping shots at the truck. And at that point, you're not defending your property, your property has already been taken. At that point, you're just executing someone in the back as they run away. Uh, so I think that's the distinction I draw, but as long as you're on the defensive and you're not the aggressor, I think you're good.
All right, sounds good.
Any, uh, anything else going on with, uh, the rest of us before the density occurs?
Uh, really quick, just for my note taking, uh, in regards to the, uh, oversight committee. Um, so it was popular vote, multiple choice, top eight, council chooses four. Did we agree to interviews or are we just going to discuss them?
I think we did, um, when it gets down to that, like I would interview them who's there.
Yeah, are, are we good with interviews or do we just want to discuss them, you know?
I think that if members are interested in interviewing, they can be present and ask questions. If they're not, they don't have to be.
Uh, one more thing that I forgot briefly, um, th- this is, I'm just gonna bring this up here because I would hope this shouldn't have to be a legislation thing, but I've, I've already run into it a few times. Uh, is protection for medical staff in regards to treatment. Um, we have some very enthusiastic lawyers currently, um, that are, uh, trying to kind of nitpick those things and come to us and, uh, uh, try to potentially, it hasn't hit this point, but try to potentially, uh, take my doctors to court over how a patient was treated. Uh, generally, how we run things is, you know, we, we are very open to unorthodox method of treatment, um, trust our doctors to do the best judgment that they have in the moment. Uh, so if that continues to be an option, I might propose some sort of protections.
What grounds do they have to sue? Isn't, don't we have state-sponsored healthcare? They pay for any of this?
Right, that's what, that's what I'm wondering, yeah.
There has been, and I don't know if you can confirm or deny this, I have heard that some doctors are unhappy with their current pay and will try and charge people.
Tweets about doctors being on strike two days ago.
Yes.
They got a pay raise recently.
They did, I know. Uh, they, they think that we should be getting paid as much as group six workers or something, and frankly, it's just not gonna happen. I'm, I'm not asking for that. Um, but the thing is that the doctors that are on strike, either they're just not working or they're still treating them anyways, so currently it's been, um, it's been less of an issue within the hospital than you'd think. Um, but there, there are some requesting, requesting tips after the fact, which, uh, I, I personally don't have a major issue with, they're still treating the individuals, so, you know, it's, it's optional at that point.
They can ask, but I mean, they can't.
They can't refuse treatment. At a hundred percent, yes, that, that as well. Um, no, we're, we're very on top of that, um, but I mean, the, I think the pay's in a good place. We have a lot of good people that are happy with it.
Yeah, uh, like it, it's dangerous as fuck out there on the streets for these guys driving trucks, man. I drove them for, for a little bit.
Money because they risk getting robbed.
It's, 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 it, I did, I did, uh, I, I ran some grime. Um, probably for about like a week, shortly after the, uh, the borders reopened and whatnot. I got robbed twice. I got robbed twice. Uh, and there were several other instances that I avoided robbery simply because I, the people who were trying to rob me recognized me. And they're, they were like, oh, okay, well, you're good to go, you know? It's, it's fucked up. Uh, it, tell these fucking doctors to stop whining.
No, I'm fine with me, uh, trust me, I'm, uh, try to be the nice one about it and, you know, um, like I'm on their side at the end of the day, but I'm heavily discouraging any of that because, uh, it's just not helpful. They have extremely high demands, uh, and they're kind of delusional on that front, to be very frank.
Hell, if they think it's better, tell them we're group six. You got more doctors than we do cops. Fuck it.
That's the thing, we are, we have some that just are, um, and you know, they can do that if they want, um, but yeah, the, the ones that are sticking around, um, are really standing out currently.
Yeah, I don't got any sympathy. Look, I'd, uh, five or six years ago, I was making four hundred dollars an hour as a lawyer, uh, and this is in the old economy, so that should give you an idea of how low that was. And then I was making six hundred and sixty dollars an hour as a judge. Uh, and I worked that job full-time as well as running a free legal advice booth at the Dean World for a good four months to save up three hundred thousand dollars, put a down payment on a house to then be under a loan for the next five months working off that money. So I have zero fucking sympathy for anyone bitching about anything.
Oh, yeah, no, the, uh, Yeah, no, the, uh, yeah, what's up?
Um, can you fire doctors?
Yes, we can, um, we do plan to.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not like badgering you to do it. I was just curious if you had the power to do it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a discussion usually, um, but it's gone well so far. We've at least had one firing, um, already, uh, you're well aware of that one. It was, uh, that Desmond Walker. Yeah, yeah, he's our only firing so far. No one's even been fired for a felony yet, so that's pretty good.
Oh, nice.
It's, it's pretty good.
We're talking about Frog, right?
Yes, Frog.
Yeah, okay, okay. I didn't actually, I never actually knew his real name.
Yeah, 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 I, uh,
That mother, that motherfucker lied to me about that shit.
Oh, he lied to a lot of people.
Oh, yeah, he straight up lied to you. I remember I was sitting out front.
Yeah.
And the doctors came out and told me what he did and you're like, no, not Frog.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was, uh, he was very nice to, uh, very, um, specific people, uh, and anyone he didn't consider valuable enough, uh, no, he was not.
I see. So what you're saying is because I was a prospective mayoral candidate, he was exceptionally nice to me.
Pretty much, yes, um, they were, yeah, yeah, exactly. Uh, it's, it's a jump back, sorry. I know this kind of derailed a little bit, um, to be very clear here, I'm, I'm on the same page with pay, uh, that, that's not an issue where I'm bringing up, um, but how do y'all feel about protections for doctors when it comes to treatment?
I don't, I don't know how lawyers should be suing them anyway. What the fuck is, what are they suing the government?
They suing him in open court for a hundred bucks?
Are they suing the doctor themselves or are they suing the government?
That's the thing, is they haven't tried yet, so I'm not trying to like push it now, but, um, we do way too frequently have
Cause for example, when you sue PD, when you sue a PD member who was acting in accordance with their duties, you're, you're suing them and their department. So are, are they suing the hospital and the doctor? I
Yeah, I, I don't really know, um, I've had, uh, yeah.
Like circumstances are, like, is it just that, like, did they go in for a broken leg and had a liver removed or, you know?
Not, not quite that level, um, not quite that level yet or anything like that, um.
If they just didn't like how the doctor did things, but they still were treated properly, then I don't see
Exactly. That's kind of my thoughts.
It shouldn't legislate bedside manner.
Yeah, what's up, Michael?
Do we have a malpractice law? Legislation, anything?
No, I do not.
Could we have that?
And I personally, um, would not want that. I think that we, um, we have a high level of treatment, um, options when it comes to our doctors, um. If, uh, if someone were to abuse that trust, uh, they would straight blatantly just be fired.
I'm just gonna say there are, uh, a number of reasons judicially why I could not foresee the feasible prosecution of malpractice cases.
Uh, yeah. Uh, yeah, I think if it rises to the level of like extreme negligence, I mean, you could try to articulate like assault with a deadly or attempted murder at that point anyway.
Yes, um, if someone fucked around that hard, um, if, if it's like the, uh, example that Etta gave where it was very blatant malpractice, it wasn't just unorthodox treatment, uh, they, they would likely just be fired and that could potentially hit criminal charges level. But, uh, you know, as for treatment for what is, you know, there, uh, we do offer a lot of options for that and I would prefer if that remain an option.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, like, I, I don't, I don't think that, um, yeah, that, that, that kind of thing should be entertained whenever the lawyers try to push, so.
Hell, yeah, okay. I, I think also, um, the, the big thing that, um, I, although I bring it up now, I don't think this needs to hit legislation levels is that, um, judges aren't idiots. I think, uh, I think generally they could take a look at something and be like, well, you know, this doctor is a doctor, they're just trying to treat this individual the best they can, uh, and hopefully that wouldn't go very far, obviously.
Right. So maybe that's a discussion that you and Lance can have, uh, you know?
I mean, if, if it's a lawyer, I mean, yeah, if it's a lawyer pressing it though, I'm assuming they're not doing this willy-nilly. It's probably because someone called them and asked them to, so they're probably just doing their job at that point.
No, absolutely, yeah, no horror feelings on that, mm.
Yeah.
But, uh, but yeah. Okay, good. I'm glad y'all are on essentially the same page. That just, uh, that's helpful. Uh, Max is, uh, he's resting his eyes. He just texted me.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Could I break to subject? Uh, I don't really know how this would even work. This is obviously probably more geared towards Ukraine, uh, Senor Buns. We've been having issues lately with, uh, I'm using air quotes, the managers and the people who work there. Uh, as far as I've been led to believe is that nobody there actually has autonomy over anyone. It's just a, uh, who gets to work first and signs in type deal, is, is that correct?
I don't know.
They, I, to answer your question, I could, I, I believe, I believe.
What's the impetus for the issue?
They've self-appointed themselves like managers and things that are in charge, I guess.
We've also been having issues where people get there and, uh, their manager for the day and they start firing people and it's causing some, uh, controversy uh, with the staff.
Wait, who? Who is firing, uh, sorry, who's firing who?
Uh, I know Adam was fired, uh, one point for the
That sounds like, uh,
From where?
That sounds like not our purview.
Okay.
That sounds like, that sounds like, uh, not our issue.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Okay.
Hmm.
Yeah, I don't think you have to worry about that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a different important category. Uh, Mr. Mayor, is it density time or we reach maximum velocity?
I think so.
Hmm.
All right, let's hear it.
First things first.
And I'll start with the one about murdering me?
Nope, we're gonna hit that one later.
All right.
I told you he was above seventy.
Um, hold on, that, that, that's not important, okay? Um, Brady Law, you're familiar with it, Crane?
Fuck you.
What do you, uh, what do you, uh, what do you think about the Brady Law?
I think that we should create our own laws in this jurisdiction and anyone who thinks they're clever by bringing in laws that literally took hundreds of fucking years of jurisprudence and policymaking to come up with uh, is probably an asshole.
I, I think as a general policy, I think we should wait to see how the bench rules and then if the council wants to discuss it after that, maybe that's when we talk about it.
So, uh, you don't get, you guys don't think it's needed and no, no threat of evidence destroying it or whatnot?
If there is something that's needed, I think we can suggest and create our own laws. I think citing to and copy pasting from other jurisdictions is the fucking death knell of my enjoyment insanity.
I don't want any sweaty lawyers.
Okay. So what are you saying about making it illegal for cops to conceal and destroy evidence?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, isn't that a given?
Yeah, I thought that was.
Yeah, I thought that was.
Is it a given?
I would assume so, but uh, is it not?
I mean, it's evidence tampering. It's a charge.
There is a charge. We can be charged with that criminally.
Um, and if a cop is charged with evidence tampering, what happens to them, Dakota?
I'd assume you'd get fucking fired. I mean, they've been fired for less.
But I would be fired if I did evidence, if I was evidence tampering. And if I was in charge of people who were evidence tampering, I would fire them immediately.
That actually brings up an interesting little point here to not tangent too much, but I believe, uh, only police are authorized to push charges as the state. Is that Crane? Is am I? Who can push criminal charges right now?
The prosecutorial powers are limited to the PD currently.
I I don't know.
However, however, uh, once again, as we discussed with the civilian oversight board. If there was an allegation of evidence tampering by a cop in a case and you investigated with your board and found merit to that claim and made a recommendation to the PD that officer be fired. Uh, not only would your recommendation be public in accordance with how your board's supposed to be run, uh, but then PD would be put on the hot seat. And if they decided to circle the wagons and not fire that guy, well, I mean, God. No offense, Dakota, but good luck getting anything passed ever on this council again.
Yeah, yeah, if there is, if there was someone who is evidence tampering and came forward and they weren't fired, I would have a much harder time going into work, I'll be honest.
Yeah, I I agree. And I I just I just don't even know if this is a topic we're even unpacking, but are we wanting only the police to have prosecution powers for now?
I I will not be creating any kind of district attorney's office or prosecutorial body, uh, in the near future. That's something that has been heavily reviewed ad nauseam and it's never worked well. Evidence tampering is the act of destroying, concealing, or removing a piece of evidence with the purpose of hiding the truth or making an item unavailable for an ongoing investigation or judicial proceeding.
So, uh, would we qualify, uh, withholding evidence as evidence tampering, right?
Yeah, correct. Specifically the language of making it unavailable for judicial proceeding.
Okay, so it's already a law then. We're good.
Correct. It would be during discovery if, for example, the defense asked for all files related to the PD's case. And the PD didn't turn over that piece of evidence, that would be seen as evidence tampering.
Okay, next up. Animal carcasses.
Hmm.
Uh, they shouldn't be littering the streets. I'd like to propose a misdemeanor fine. Uh, for people found tampering with or hauling around a literal huge animal parts and just kind of just doing whatever the fuck they want with them. It's gross. It's unclean. It's a it's a sanitation issue. Yeah.
It's actually happening.
Oh, yeah.
This is another Reed thing. He just carries one around, yeah.
Dude. No, no, no. It's not only carrying them around. People are placing them like in places like Senior Buns, which is a.
In all of your apartments, like.
Don't they smell?
Every door.
Yeah, they reek.
Yep.
How do they handle the smell? What the fuck?
Like, yeah, there's like slabs of deer carcass, like just laying around that people will like try and put on people and
Yeah.
use as seating. It's just, it's beyond stupid.
Have you not noticed like, uh, people are mounting deer heads in really odd places and yet
I'm gonna be honest with you.
See one every ten seconds?
I've been sleeping in the chambers on the second floor. I don't, I don't, I don't like the public that much.
I've seen a deer carcass in here.
I don't think mounting deer heads is that bad, cause a lot of people are doing it for decorative purposes, but yeah, like like slabs of meat or legs or whatever is.
A carcass on top of a street light is a bit odd for me personally.
Yeah, I think it depends on.
I feel like the only the only place you should leave that shit is back in nature where it's gonna get eaten anyways. Having it around the streets and everything is, yes, having it around the streets, hanging in fucking streetlights, uh, in the park, et cetera. That's that shouldn't be a thing.
Um, could, what would we call a charge for doing something like this?
Oh, let's make it a fun acronym.
Okay.
You wanna call it, you wanna call it the Reed Law? Repulsive, emergent, uh.
I'm no good at those, so.
Yeah, well, everyone works on.
I'm trying to think of a synonym that starts with E for like corpse. I'll work on it.
Okay.
Can I, uh, backpack off of the, uh, carcassing with, uh, some type of law surrounding, uh, hunting without a license? Cause I don't believe there's one on the books right now.
Really?
I believe it's just animal cruelty right now.
So what we're, so the way we have it set up right now is in order to hunt with a firearm, uh, you need a license to carry the gun, so that solves the whole like needing a license to hunt thing. Uh, and then, uh, if you're not using a gun and you're not following the hunting protocols, then it'd be animal cruelty.
Okay.
Is that, is that still like a zero zero charge though, the animal cruelty?
No, that got fixed.
Okay.
Huge now.
Twenty-four months, eighteen hundred dollar fine.
I'll be honest, I'll just chat GPT this, uh, regulated exclusion of exotic debris.
Yeah, there you go. Perfect.
Nice.
There you go.
All right, hold on, let me whip that up.
What are they for fines and whatnot for this?
Uh, what was, uh, what was animal cruelty again?
Twenty-four months and an eighteen hundred dollar fine.
Mm-hmm, twenty-four, eighteen hundred. Uh, probably scale it down by like half that, so twelve months and nine hundred dollars.
Sounds good to me.
Called a misdemeanor.
So we are, uh, I I guess it's safe to say we're all in agreement on this?
Yeah.
Yes. I'm good. I'm just gonna slap that bitch in right now.
Exposed, uh, no, that's not a good, that's that's an E.
Yeah, the first one was good.
The first one was fine.
Wait, you still need a name for it?
Oh, I got regulated exclusion of exotic debris. So Reed.
Uh, could I? Hmm, I'll.
What's wrong, bro?
Hold on.
Did I misspell it?
Uh, so, so TLDR on this is gonna be anyone that leaves these carcasses, um, where they shouldn't be. Is that, is that the, uh?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They shouldn't leave carcasses in in public areas.
So, uh, as a police officer, what if I was able to figure out, um, based on evidence, who left that there?
You're referring to DNA?
I am.
You should only have, okay, so you should only have DNA if they've committed a violent felony. Uh, and on top of that, the only time that you're granted warrants by the judiciary to gather DNA for the purpose of an exclusionary or inclusionary charge would be, uh, for, you know, exigent crimes, so drug trafficking, violent felonies, things like that. If it was a misdemeanor littering charge, we're not gonna allow you to gather DNA just for it.
I am okay with that. I just want to make sure something like this isn't an early opportunity for someone to act like a moron.
Nope, that is always and will be the policy.
So, sorry, is this is this charge you're putting in a misdemeanor then, Crane?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it makes sense.
All right.
Just trying to put the fire out before it starts.
That's the name of the game, bruh. So any individual found to be abandoning animal carcasses or byproducts in public areas within city limits.
Yes.
If they're dumping them out in the county in the desert, I don't give a shit, to be honest.
Today, animals are gonna be care of that.
Yeah, coyotes and shit. Um, we, uh, okay. Next one's a fun one. I'm a big fan of this one. Uh, mutual combat laws. It it it.
Like duels?
Please, no, please.
Oh, my god.
Um, this is what it was written as, uh, for notes. Consent to spar in the rights of the WWE should be respected. MMA should be respected. Let's have fight nights and empower the people to provide entertainment to the masses. Bread and circus is how you keep a population docile.
Wait, what does it mean the rights of?
So the the this isn't the actual writing for whatever act we're, uh, talking about?
Yeah.
Um, essentially, my vision was to, uh, you know, um, have if two people want to beat the shit out of each other, they could do it legally as long as they were being supervised by a police off.
Does this absolve all liability?
Yeah.
And how do and how do we gain, uh, consent?
Uh, the 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 police officer would be the witness.
Okay, so the officer has to inform them of the risks, liabilities. They have to both affirmatively consent and waive any liability and then perform.
Correct. Uh, what do you guys think about that?
Okay, so is this, are we talking like sponsored events or are we talking about just spontaneously?
Spontaneous, spontaneous.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not gonna lie, I'm 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 in favor, cause I used to do that in court all the time.
Yeah.
There were some times where I didn't feel like hearing a case between like Mike Block and the PD. And I just said, y'all wanna scrap it out? And, uh, if there were like four defendants and four cops, then I'd be like, all right, you match up with you, you match up with you one at a time. We'll do this like, you know, uh, death death fight style and, you know, it just worked out.
I I.
I like it honestly.
I have to be a witness briefly in the Tergal case that's happening right now. Um, shouldn't take more than five or 10 minutes. I apologize. Timing was very poor, um, but I, you know. Is that okay, guys?
I mean, we could still discuss it while you're down there.
Okay, all right. I will return shortly.
My, uh, my one stipulation, just instantly coming to mind is I I wouldn't want this to occur either like in the street sidewalk or even a a public business, right? Like if it's, if it's gonna happen like in a courtroom or an alleyway or or something that's like not immediately obvious and like disruptive to people who don't wanna view that sort of thing, then then I I could be on board with it.
Yeah, it can't just be anywhere willy nilly, um, and again, I I'm sorry if I'm speaking for you, Dakota, but I just feel like that's a manpower issue for PD who are already pretty spread thin.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Uh, if if it were to be a thing, it would have to have a designated area where said thing occurs before. I I don't even know how they would go about, would you just run up to an officer in the street and say, hey, will you regulate our state sanctioned assault of one another?
You know what? I got an idea. What if we let judges do it?
I'm down for that.
That now.
Gives them something else to do, yeah.
I I I would agree, but what was proposed is something that could be, uh.
And it also, you can also confirm that there won't be any weapons involved, cause the metal detectors. So you have it in the courtroom. The judge, you know, gets liability waivers via verbal confirmation from the two participants. And, uh, then they have at it.
I think that's a good middle ground, honestly.
You call down an EMS, you know, be on standby in case anybody gets injured and you go from there.
I like that, yeah.
I wouldn't mind doing it. I already do in court sometimes, like I said, so.
Exactly, yeah, that's like, because I'm not opposed to the idea. It's just like we don't need to put more on to PD that are already strained, so to, you know, get to their calls.
Yeah, I don't I don't mind doing it as a judge. If people come into city hall together and they want mutual combat and they don't want the risk of getting sued or getting arrested, then they come to a judge.
And I know there's multiple other judges that would love something to do during their, you know, time between cases.
It works for me.
Do we have a vending machine in this place yet?
Uh, I have lots of food.
Do not, I don't think.
Yeah, I think I'm.
I got the ATM at it, but I don't think we got the food.
Kermy did, yeah, Kermy didn't respond to my text, so we may need to fire him.
Oh, my god, how could he?
Hmm, uh, I don't think that is a council meeting. He should be on standby. I don't. Not a good look, Kermy. Not a good look.
In the future, just in case there is, uh, vending machines at the laundromat, I think that's the closest to us.
You're saying that's close?
Yeah, uh, yes, for the hospital, that's even the closest and it's further east to there.
All right, get some, just some food, it'd be fine.
I'm gonna be in my head a second. I'm just, I'm here, but I'm, uh, updating all those charges we talked about under the vehicle shit.
I'm gonna go to the toilet.
I hope she goes to Max's office.
I don't have keys.
Yes, what's up?
Oh, Queen's in his, oh.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, thank you.
Anybody else need food?
Oh, yeah, maybe I'll take some, might as well. So I don't know how long, whatever the may says can take.
Oh, he's busy, okay. Alex, he still okay? Oh, wow, I just can't give anything today.
Oh, no.
Architectural layout is less than ideal right now and is.
There you go.
Thank you, I appreciate.
You're muted.
Uh, I'm good, thanks.
Owned.
Make a list. Okay. Issues with the place and give it to me. Okay. I feel like I've heard people literally like walking into the towers and jumping out.
Yes, that's what someone, apparently there is one walkway that you can go into. You go up a staircase and you leap across like one roof that is barely separated and you can get out. Um, yeah, I I know someone, so there's a, I gotta talk to the captains, but there's someone who I would like to bring on board to help, uh, logistically get it started with like staffing and fitting it out with what it's gonna need, cause they used to work there a long time ago and they were pretty well. And I kinda wanna just take them there to have a look around as is and then get their thoughts on what they think needs to be remedied as far as layout. Does that, uh, does that seem all right?
Uh, yeah, they can have like their opinion on layout, but they might not be how it's gonna be. Like, I think, I think getting rid of any possibility of leaving the areas would be the first.
Yes, definitely, definitely preventing them from being able to walk out would be number one. Okay, all right, no problem. I just wanna make sure.
Yep, no, you're good. All right, cool.
Feel like I'm gonna bring that up. Let's get rid of the prison and bring back the pit. Ain't gonna fuck around if that's the case.
Sometimes Crane yaps too much and I get distracted. Good notes. I am trying.
Good notes. I am trying.
Alright, favorable responses already, that's, that's great.
Guaranteed, out of all the things that we do, that's gonna be the one thing remembered by everybody.
Uh, the, even McNulty, that's a cop, just said, hey, so yeah, we're there.
I feel like that's the best thing I'm gonna bring to the table.
That's a good one. I, I don't think anyone can disagree with that. We're just a city that moves very fast and uh, thirty-five is not it.
Uh, Crane, question?
Yeah.
MDT access? Is that just for you and the mayor or is that something we can?
Oh, everyone will be getting access. Uh, I gotta sit down and just set it all up.
Okay, alright.
That's why I got your guys' info that I emailed you about. Um, but I'm working with the technician and I think he just put in the categories for city council documents and state announcements. So I'm gonna create a uh, staff job uh, tied to your guys' access that gives you access to those as well as uh, the penal code. Just finished updating all the fines for the other moving violations, so I'll uh, I'll address this, the city council MDT access after the meeting.
And I guess this is for my own knowledge, is Tongva considered city or country?
Uh, the roads that I would consider country roads are Joshua Route sixty-eight and Substancia. The way that I, I typically look at it is they are uh, relatively even elevation, uh, two lane roads without a divider. Outside of city limits. Tongva, I think, is a bit too dangerous to be going uh, seventy-five consistently on.
It's like up or downhill, it's a w- windy. That's why I always considered it still in the city because it's paved personally.
Oh yeah, that makes sense. Have you guys seen the twats?
What is?
The state announcement?
People really like that.
God bless the government.
Yep, and then everyone just retweets it.
Someone was like, someone mentioned, um, what did they say? They said best mayor or something like that, and I just wanna be like, this was a council decision.
This wasn't me thing, I did.
This was uh, everyone's thing.
To realize that things are a lot different, but you know, so they'll, they'll get there hopefully. Someone said, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the rest of the council, that's pretty good.
Oh man, okay.
And then someone uh, someone tweeted out G six smashing at fifty-five past Norbuns as if they're not already doing that and worse. But now they can be charged more for it, that's good.
I mean, I'm unironically seeing those guys like trip their huge trucks around corners and shit, it's, it's ridiculous right now.
I'm pretty sure the bigger ones are faster too, from what I've heard.
Hmm, yeah, probably.
Going crazy.
Probably just like slap a whole bunch of upgrades in it too.
Yep, yeah, probably.
Love you, Brad.
Love you.
I return, apologies.
Oh, you're good.
Go.
So uh, what was the general consensus on mutual combat?
We were fine with it in the courtroom under judicial supervision.
Okay.
Cause I, one of the objections was that they didn't want to burden the cops and I said, fuck it. I already allow in my courtroom, why not just offer the judges the opportunity to entertain it or not? So if a judge entertains it, you bring the other guy to city hall, you say, we want to fight, we want to do it safely without liability. Judge calls down an EMS, um, you know, gets their consent verbally, hits the gavel, they fight, and that's the end of it.
Um, and this doesn't have like pertain to like an actual court case, just like literally.
No, they just ask, it's just like open court and I, and I think a really good benefit of it is, is the metal detectors mean that nobody's gonna cheat and pull out a knife or a gun or whatever.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah.
Perfect.
So uh. To add on to that, I don't know if this is something we want to add now or just address it as can, but you mentioned like MMA, like I, I think if it's under a licensed business where that's their speciality, I mean, I think it should be allowed then too, but that may be a, a bridge recross when it comes, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Um. Anyone else think jujitsu's lame?
Hmm, I mean, if I wanted to wrestle a man, I would have, you know, been born gay, you know what I'm saying?
What?
Yeah, word. Or, or bisex, or bisex.
Hey, you know, whatever you're into, but not my thing.
Um, okay, so uh, would that be a, where would we plug that into the uh, current legislation?
Uh, shit, I don't know.
Uh, would we just toss it in the legislation section of the uh, the MDT? As its own thing, kinda like how you did with the uh, speed limits?
Uh, the alternative would be uh, I, I don't know if it's too wordy, but you could just rework the assault and battery definition, like exemptions if under judicial guidance or, or just something.
I think we should make a uh, legislation.
Yeah, I think we need a specific entry for mutual combat.
Okay, uh, do you want me to draft it up, Mr. Crane, or?
That would be very helpful.
Okay, easily done. I will get that done today.
Cool.
Uh, next, uh, oh, what was the vote on that, by the way?
Oh, and we all for it.
Yeah, unanimous, I believe.
Yeah, and any nays.
Excellent, I like this trend. I like how we're asking for any nays, because we're so cooperative and working together right now, and so it's a beautiful thing to witness.
Yeah, I think anybody's really touching on anything too divisive yet, so.
Yeah, nobody's asked to murder each other yet.
I love how we're not going around and suckles.
Speaking of which, uh, the one child policy.
Let's go baby!
I, I'm, I uh, this is a uh, child of mine, I went ahead and shared it with you guys.
A child of yours?
Yeah.
Well, you better be ready to pay for that.
This is just a uh, a brief uh, overview, but essentially.
I can get it.
Los Santos has an incest slash adoption slash family tree epidemic. And uh, the purpose of the one child policy would be to null and void uh, officially any of these fraudulent adoptions. Uh, it would furthermore establish the uh, the crime of adoption fraud. Uh, and it would also, um, and all of these things are revenues for the state, okay, so not only does it establish that stuff, it's going to provide the opportunity for people to officially uh, and state recognize adopt uh, only one person. Um, and it would be for the price of twenty-five thousand dollars per adoption, twenty-five thousand dollars to unadopt. Uh, and a fifty thousand dollar fine if someone is somehow uh, con- convicted of adoption fraud. I don't know how you would get caught doing that. Uh, it's mainly just a big number to scare. I'm sure someone might be stupid enough to actually uh, outright incriminate themselves in that regard.
Blas and Fiona.
But that is the one child policy to, to kind of curtail this uh, weird societal phenomenon that's been going on for years as far as I'm aware.
Question.
Sure.
What if uh, is, is there anything in there with liability? Like if you adopt somebody, you're liable for their actions?
Nope. Uh, it literally just a certificate that says, hey, uh, this, you are adopted by this person, uh, congratulations, that's it.
Could we have that?
Uh, liability in what way?
Do the, it's your kid. You're liable for their actions to some degree.
So that, that would, that would be possible and a potentially good idea, uh, if they weren't uh, adults.
Fair.
But, but in a one hundred percent of occasions, they are adults and oftentimes uh, extremely close in age, so it's, it's a weird, it's a weird thing.
So there's, there, there's a lot of questions with this, for example, um, like I'm all on board with this, don't get me wrong. I just wanna get the kinks out of the way. Um, so you and I already discussed this wouldn't apply to siblings.
Right, yeah, okay, okay, yeah, so uh, blood relatives? Um, this does not apply to at all, obviously, because it's not an adoption, you guys are related by blood.
We've got marriage relatives.
Um.
Oh, progress beyond.
I would say. I also have something on marriage I wanna propose as well in a moment, but uh, go on, Juna.
Um, so the other thing, fuck, what was it? Okay, age difference. So uh, the way that I, I have this playing out in my mind, so please feel free to intervene, is um, you'd obviously uh, people would apply for this and they, they'd uh, state their case in point to, to whoever it may be that will be in charge of this. I'm thinking a judge, obviously. Uh, let's say a thirty-year-old wants to adopt a twenty-nine-year-old.
Hmm.
I'm iffy on that. Age just doesn't make sense to me. However, if a fifty-year-old wants to adopt a twenty-five-year-old, that makes sense.
You're.
Yeah.
Go on, go on.
Cause at that point, it's like, okay, if you're attempting to adopt someone like a year or two younger than you, you might as well call that person your sibling. Rather than your kid, you know?
Right, but that, yeah, that's just, that's just not how adoption works though, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Um, so my thoughts on this, uh, I agree with you, it's fucking stupid. Uh, that said, I think it's finally time for the uh, the city of New Los Santos to really take advantage of that stupidity and to uh, uh, e- despite the um, minute age differences uh, to let it go through anyway, because uh, that's a twenty-five thousand dollar check for the state.
Hmm.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I guess I was thinking that it would um, you'd have to really prove your case in point to people, but I, I understand that aspect too. So why are we charging this much money for it? Why are we limiting it? Why not just like raking the cash with people?
Oh, you wanna, you wanna, you wanna up the price a little bit?
I can't, no, not the price, more like uh, more like uh, how many children, like uh, if someone wants to, like uh, five kids, they can throw over a hundred K. Yeah, but that's the thing though, if, if, if people start adopting five kids, then, I mean, you've got to think about it this way, this city in comparison, this island, this state in comparison to other states is actually quite small. Everyone is tied to one another in some way, and that's how you fuck up the family tree completely.
Yeah, uh, so, you know, obviously, uh, these ties, uh, you know, I used to run the streets uh, years ago, you know, I, I knew a lot of people. Uh, it, it provided a lot of, uh, what's the word? Uh, muddying of the waters insofar as, you know, like, hey, you know, Johnny attacked Billy, but you know, I know both of them, blah, 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 anyway. Um, it, it's like a, it's like a, it's, it, it's like a societal issue, really. Um, this kind of helps it a little bit. Uh, and that's why I wanted to put a cap on it, because we, uh, it, it kind of, um. So, I, what's the best way to put this? I, I, I.
It just gets a bit absurd, kinda, you know?
Oh, it, it.
When you have somebody who's literally just like, hey, hi, I'm on you, you're my kid, you know?
And that has happened, that has fucking happened. I remember when uh, when Bass passed away and I did his autopsy and viewing after, um, one of the uh, contacts just said, all of my children. And you know how fucking hard it was to try to figure out who they were? There were so fucking many. It, it took me all night.
Um, as part of the adoption process, I was flirting with the idea of allowing people to uh, change their surnames. Uh, I don't know how, yeah, I don't know how that would work on the backend, however. Uh, so it might just completely gloss over that idea. I don't want, I don't want, I don't, I don't want people's like records not being transferred over to their new.
From a logistical standpoint.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll give you a comparison, Max.
Hmm.
Uh, even though I have the judicial and uh, technical capability to do so in the MDT, uh, I typically refer everyone who wants a name change to the federal government, because I just don't think it's something we should be fucking with.
Yeah, I, I, I feel that. I, I was just letting you guys know that's what I was on, uh, Nakoto.
So this is uh, just to clarify, this is specifically for uh, a parental adopting a child, correct?
Yeah.
So what would stop someone from saying, uh, oh, we're brother and sister now, we're related?
Um. Good fucking point.
Are, are you talking about like blood relative or are you talking about like other?
No, 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 I'm just talking about people doing the same exact thing that you're trying to curb, but just different, different relationship.
We could uh, so.
That would still be fo- that would still be falsifying, I, I don't know the correct terminology for it, but it would still be.
What about like identity? We could call it identity fraud, right? Isn't that?
Then you're getting into dicey territory with what that constitutes legally, I think.
I feel like.
We, we could, we could, we could just call that adoption as well. You know, then uh, you know, we uh, would you guys do DNA tests at the uh, the hospital by chance?
Yeah.
Oh, good lord.
You do?
I have done that before, yeah.
Are those bad? We're always gonna get, run into the issue that people can just, instead of having it be official, which is like what you do by adopting and paying, and then you could just say, they will just say that this is my kid.
Right.
Obviously, but then you have the difference of people just saying it versus, versus it being official. Am I allowed to um, question why one? Why not two? Why, why not allowed to have a sibling?
I, 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 see, I was, I was thinking that, I was thinking, um, uh, why don't we start off with the one child policy? See how that goes and also.
About grandkids?
Well, I was also, we were, I, I, I raised that up as well, but with my, with my train of thought, I was, um, I really wanna do this family tree, that is something that I can do in my own time, I can, I can build up that document. Um, that wouldn't be accessible to the public at all, but it's a way to keep track, and then coming back to it a little while later if this goes through and potentially adding another child to that, so.
Wait, hold on.
Child policy.
So you wanna? You wanna? Am I following this right? You wanna gather everyone's information about who's related to who by blood or adoption and put it in like a central document?
No, no, it's for the DOJ and if uh, so for instance.
So you want the government to track who's who?
Not the PD, the DOJ and potentially uh, it, it, potentially the um, doctors as well in case of an emergency. So they know who to contact in the case of an emergency, uh, let's say a person doesn't have emergency contacts.
Do you have uniforms planned?
What? No? Yeah, I think uh, I'm, I'm open to this discussion, that's why I've, I've tried to like lean into it a bit, but I don't think as it stands, it's the best idea.
I have a lot of feelings about this, uh, partially because uh, my family is uh, not as I guess, over abundant as uh, you know, the late Sam Bass's Bush was, but um.
Right.
Like I have my brother, uh, Flop, who, you know, we are not blood related.
Of course.
Um, which we have, you know, officially adopted each other, you know, for many, many years and.
Right.
You know, then I have, although not officially, you know, a father-daughter relationship, I do have my father figures, Richard Dark and Matt Rhodes. And, you know, they have officially taken Flop as, you know, their child, so, and then they also had a son, uh, Cody Sharp, who is no longer with us.
Was he dead?
Yeah, he's dead.
Oh, okay.
Um, now, as far as like the age difference, uh, you know, there's not a lot of an age difference between Matt and I. Um, there is more of a significant one between Richard and I, so I don't like the, the age restriction on.
Oh, that's not gonna, that's not gonna, that's not gonna be a thing.
Yeah, um, but I, I do get where you're coming from as to why you feel it might be, you know, because people just randomly picking up strangers off the road and blaming them is silly.
It's societal erosion.
Right.
It's terrible.
There are, there are established families already that have built those bonds and have those relationships and we shouldn't be messing with that.
Counterpoint.
You're saying there's good ones?
Point, if those bonds mean so much to them, surely they'd be willing to pull a little money to make it official in the eyes of the state.
And the whole, the whole family tree thing in, in my eyes wasn't anything to do with like keeping proper track, it was moreover, for example, let's say two people wanna get married and it's to find out whether they're like adopted to each other or some shit like that.
No, no, I agree, I'm on board. I think there's some good ones, especially if they got money. No, no, I agree, I'm on board, I think there's some good ones, especially if they got money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
This is gonna be a big moneymaker for the state.
Like, I I I just really, uh, like, I I I know I'm passionate about this, but I do also wanna just um, mention, I have a brother, not blood related. Uh, you know, six years in the fucking making, I'd do anything for the guy. Um, so I'm at the same boat as you, I I completely get it, um, he he's my whole world. And I'd never wanna lose that, but at the same time, it's like, he could still be my brother, without being like, you know, whatever, you get what I I'm trying to say.
So maybe, maybe the twenty five K is to like, you know, we like erase their name from the log? Don't gotta wear the armband or whatever?
Look, this, this family, this, this family tree, this tracking shit, this has nothing to do with the one child policy, nothing.
Yeah, it was just my idea, yeah, my idea completely, exactly, exactly, a hundred percent.
Um, nothing at all.
Yeah, I'm fine with people paying twenty five K for a little flare certificate, but uh, it it stops there, I I don't care about tracking, I don't care about any kind of legal additions to any of this, it's a certificate, they could claim it on Twitter, like.
Okay. Nakota?
Uh, as a member of the PD and uh, a sentence at the end stating there'll be a fifty thousand dollar fine for uh, some kind of penal code infraction, I need
Correct.
To, I need to know what that's gonna look like, and how that's actually gonna be enforced.
Adoption fraud?
Hmm.
So is that like? It sounds like. Is that like, if 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 Joe runs up to Bob and says, I'm your son, but they're not actually related, and Suzie hears it, Suzie runs over to me and says, I heard Joe say to Bob that they're brothers, now go arrest him and fine him fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, he's calling like uh, establishing personal relationships without the government's uh, permission.
Look, Nakota, you you guys do prostitution stings, do adoption stings, man, you'll get real rich real quick.
Look, it it it, there, there's a lot of crimes that kind of rely on that same kind of interaction, you know? Like, uh, you know, hey, I saw this guy selling weed down on on Grove Street, you know, like, hey, go get that guy, you know, it it you you have to be dumb to get caught, and that's kind of by design.
Yeah, uh, also spontaneous utterance could really apply to this as well.
True.
Yeah, people constantly claiming fam- uh, familial, you know, connection to try and get out of, you know, said charge or whatnot, it's like, oh, are you sure you wanna commit to that one?
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of ways we could trip people up and make a lot of money.
Also, uh, sorry, sorry, go on, Max.
Um, I was thinking about, uh, I was kind of thinking about, um, I think it was Philippa who said, you know, why stop at one?
Yeah, farm more money.
Yeah, okay, what we could do is we could make a, kind of like a compounding uh, charge, so like, you know, twenty five K for the first one, fifty K for the second one, a hundred K for the third one.
Fuck.
You know what I'm saying?
Oh, my god. No, but this is crazy money.
So like, you know, say one person adopts one sibling and the other parent adopts the other one.
Well, do we legally recognize marriages? I don't think we do, right?
Not yet.
Wait, do girls count or is it just boys?
Just the boys.
Really, we're on the same line of thinking.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I think uh, this would also benefit from a legal definition of adoption, formally, finally, um, we could, we could include siblings and shit in that particular definition, for the purpose of uh, the weird freaks that like to do this shit. Uh, that'll help us cover our backs as well, when it comes to actually enforcing this law.
Uh, yeah, so just to clarify, this will be the most highly penalized uh, crime you can commit on paper financially in the city right now.
Good.
Yeah.
It's a terrible fucking problem.
By, by, by almost double, uh.
That's not true, possessing a PD gun's like thirty K.
Yeah, no, I know, this is fifty, so it's almost double.
Uh, sorry, Max, what did you mean by the sibling thing? Did you mean like?
Uh, I just, I mean, like, alongside en- enacting, in theory, if we pass this, enac- enacting a a formal Los Santos definition of what adoption looks like in the eyes of the state, and including siblings in that, because when you adopt someone, normally, you're adopting a child, or like a, someone, you know, that needs the protection of a new family, whereas here, it's kind of like a uh, like a, a way to dap up your homies almost, like, you know what I'm saying?
All right, I think I've got all the authoritarianism jokes out of my system, um, uh, don't tell me, um, why don't we, I think, I'll just motion that uh, maybe Juno and Max, if you guys wanna put together like draft parameters, so we could actually have something to review, um, and then we can vote on that like next week.
Okay.
So are you, are you, are you interested in uh, the definition of adoption?
Like, just cuz there's a lot of stuff we're talking about where there's like multiple variables, and uh, it's easy in conversation to be like, oh, yeah, we could just do it this way and that would work, but I kinda wanna see it, you know what I mean, to vote on it?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that'd be, because it's, there's a lot of variables involved, so I think it's probably better if we have something more concrete to go off of.
And you could even put it in that uh, that council section.
I don't mind the idea, I just think uh, we probably need something to review.
Yeah, no, me either, we gotta just iron it out a bit.
So what do you guys confuse about?
Take a look at the art on Twitter review, that looks amazing.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Nice.
Courthouse thing.
Nice.
Is, we uh, you guys.
That's a good salute.
Yeah, there you go.
And yes, I have worked out, I have worked out an arrangement with her, so she will be paid.
Disco thing.
Okay, thank god you're pointing, when he said that, I got.
Yeah, not a salute.
Disco thing, you're doing the John Travolta, I got you.
Stayin' alive, you know?
Right, right, yeah.
I think letting uh, letting people adopt multiple and just having it double up every time is probably the way to go, if you wanna make money from this and let people do stupid, but still, you know, make money from stupid, then I think that's a better option.
Yeah, cuz people are clearly already affected by this, when they've heard about it, or they've discussed it with me, they've gotten like uh, upset about it, which means that they will, they will absolutely pay for this.
Yes.
Yeah, I I.
At the end of the day, there are people who genuinely value those connections and those bonds and those relationships, and I mean,
Hmm.
They make us who we are, uh, essentially, uh.
Yeah.
I I think, I think the language just needs to be very specific, we need to make sure we cover all the all the different things we all raised here, you know, siblings and
Yeah.
Fucking grandkids, and, you know, basically, we're gonna have to penetration test this and come up with every fucking loophole and stupid clever exception people think they're gonna come up with first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cuz I don't, I'll, I'll be honest with you, maybe this is just me being lazy, uh, I don't wanna hear fifteen fucking lawsuits about, you know, my, I don't have to pay cuz blah, 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 you know, we need to make this thing our type.
Also, the enforcement, please make the enforcement as.
They're all gonna sue the government and say, I I shouldn't have to pay cuz, you know, this doesn't apply to me, and this reason, that reason, or
Yeah.
And make it all, you know, preemptive.
Uh, okay, all right, next meeting then.
Here.
Sounds good.
Next.
We have.
I am fairly certain.
The Stop Incest Now Act, or SIN Act, is to prevent the rampant incestuous relationships in Los Santos and return society to a normal state.
Dear God, yes, please.
Let me show this with you guys real quick.
Poor Aaron and Sis, what are they gonna do?
Stop fucking each other.
Yeah, ideally that, hopefully.
Well, they're exempt from this, so, sorry.
They're exempt, huh?
Wait, hold on.
That's what it says.
Why are they exempted?
I don't, I don't know why they're exempt, but they are.
The fulker exception.
God, they're, they are. It's crazy.
They're not, they're not blood related guys, I don't see why they should be chastised for this.
I guess.
Should anyone then?
They're rather step siblings.
Wait, hold on, wait, 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 wait.
Yeah.
So, the government doesn't recognize their relationship for the SIN Act, but does recognize their relationship for the purposes of the Family Tree Act?
No, well, they wouldn't be related if uh, if the uh, one child policy went through, as is.
But I thought you said if you're related by marriage, then it counts.
They're not married.
Yeah, but they're brother and sister under. Aren't they like stepbrother, stepsister, how are they related?
They are related by virtue of the fucking bullshit adoption shit, they're not even related.
Well, how are they related?
I don't, I don't even know.
First thing getting passed, then?
They've just decided they are, they've, they've adopted each other, so they shouldn't be exempt from the other one.
I forget, uh, so, oh, so, um, when I first met Sis and Aaron, they were
Yeah, this one was bad.
The, uh, under the purview of a woman named Evita. And they, uh, I wanted to schmooze her, and I kind of did a little bit, not really.
Are you Sis' dad?
I am his, uh, as of ten years ago, yes.
Legally, he's not, he hasn't paid the twenty five grand yet.
Well, guess what, that, here's the thing, here, here's the thing, I have a genuine bond, and Sis makes me a great person, and I, he is fantastic reflection of myself, and I would gladly pay twenty five thousand dollars to make that official.
Oh, see?
What about Aaron?
Yeah.
Hell nah, dog.
Okay, that's fair.
I ba- I barely know her, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, I'm gonna bring up the same exact thing as the prior, how do I enforce this?
Uh, simple.
Hundred dollar fine.
Um, if they're not related, why does it need an exception? I'm confused. I don't, I.
If, if, okay, if if Sis is talking about his wood in front of Aaron, then that's fifteen hundred dollars right there.
Oh, let's, let's just forget the exception right now, okay, cuz it 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 sounds like the uh, the one child policy is probably gonna go through as soon as it's defined, which would make this exception worthless, because they wouldn't actually be related, okay?
Okay, yeah, that makes sense, all right, sorry.
Please, that makes, I, okay, please, let's do that then.
Um, we, uh, as for enforcement, uh, it, it, if you see someone making out with their sister, slap them in the gums, but apart from that, like, it, it doesn't have to be a, an arduous.
Their home.
Then you don't, you can't charge them, Nakota!
Okay, well, it doesn't say that.
I don't know, maybe we should empower Nakota to be able to go into people's homes and watch.
Maybe.
I don't want that, though.
So that uh, they can figure this out.
Wait, wait, hold on, we called the LSPD Romance Division.
Okay.
Uh, we're really cooking here.
And then the subtan could be, we like to watch.
We can just rename IA, it'll be IAC, it'll be uh, Incest Action Committee.
There you go, exactly, it's perfect.
Um, that's what, that's uh, so essentially, the purpose of this fucking law is to outlaw incest. Um, uh, we, we will, we'll, we'll remove the fulker exception, um, cuz it doesn't really serve any fucking purpose. Uh, incest, as far as I'm aware, is not illegal currently, uh, and uh, how do you guys feel about making it illegal, guys?
Boy, okay, so hold on, is incest sex, or is it making out?
Both, that, that's, that's, I count making out as incest.
If you're kissing your sister, I don't think that should be allowed.
Yeah, I mean, I'd agree, but like, where, where is the line? You have to see them kiss to charge them?
Yeah, what about like an OTPHJ?
A kiss on the, the cheek, we're talking like tongue and.
Yeah, can I also paint a, this is not supposed to be a joke either, despite some of Crane's earlier jokes. Uh, two people are on a bench, and they're uh, making out with each other, and I walk up to them and say, let me see your adoption papers.
That's crazy.
Um.
Can you say it more angrily, and like more guttural?
Uh, that's as angry as I get in this scenario, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's.
A sheepishly ask.
Crazy, if you see people making out and you have the authority to go up and request that.
Do you see where I'm going with this, though?
You force people to identify themselves that they're not related?
So, that's actually a good thing that we're gonna have to address, um, namely, uh, making it legal for you, or defining the legality of requesting adoption papers, I guess. Um, I would like to see that, I don't see why not, um, regardless, uh, as is written now.
We would make everyone get family crests, and then you could just look on like their shoulder, and if the crest matched, they can't be making out.
Oh, no.
I mean, I think that's cool, TBH.
Oh, boy, no, uh-uh.
No, 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 no.
Crane, I thought you were done.
No, no, I mean, some of this is too easy.
The family crests are cool, guys.
Yeah, that was like, thirty percent of joke.
Can we put our family crest back at the, at the hospital?
No.
No, okay.
Nick fucked that up.
Ran better, better back then.
That's crazy, excuse me, I run the place, you don't insult me. Nick didn't do shit.
Oh.
God bless, I mean, you, you figure out the implementation works some for it, but God bless.
Uh, it, it's simple.
It's simple, we just demand their papers.
Actually, I do.
Well, as it stands now, um, adoption is not really defined, so I'm gonna work on this, and we'll uh, we'll, we'll talk, uh, well, I'll, I'll bundle this in with uh, the uh, the, the fully defined um, one child policy, uh, moving on, we have.
And can I just say, I'm not trying to uh, jam up everything, it's just, I'm gonna be the one at the bench trial when someone takes it to court.
Right, and prove it in court. Yeah, are you, are you, do you need help figuring out how to prove it, like, I, I don't, like?
No, 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 it's not, it's not the proving, I just wanna make sure that it's crystal clear for all officers, because I won't have a problem with uh, being in court, but, you know, not everyone is me.
Yeah, seventy percent of cops can't read, so it's pretty tough for them to really figure that shit out. Uh, it'll be, it'll be clear, Dakota, I promised.
All right.
Uh, we got the uh, the REIT Modernization Act.
Are we doing a review of that one with a draft next week for vote?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, cool.
Um, just wanted to float the idea, uh, we got the uh, the REIT Modernization Act of twenty twenty four. Uh, and I will share.
Hmm.
Continue.
What are you grumbling about, Crane?
When you say of twenty twenty four,
Hmm.
Isn't this an act from another jurisdiction?
Uh, I think so, I think it's inspired by it, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's, I don't think it's completely derived from it.
Um.
All right.
Sorry, could you repeat the name of it?
The, oh, I'll text you.
RAIT.
Yeah, real estate, what is it, Real Estate Investment Trust, oh, real estate, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, I'll, I'll hear it, I just wanna, I'm, I already have questions, and I.
Good old Billy boy, ask your question.
What, what, you want you to tell us about it first?
Yeah, please, please.
Well, I mean, I mean, you guys clearly fucking know about it, so I mean. Let's hear their questions.
I, I'll just say, for my purposes, I literally just lambasted a couple lawyers today for you know, citing to Brady on the docket and things like that, so I just, I would feel like a little bit of a hypocrite if we passed a, you know, paraphrase of an act from another jurisdiction.
Hmm, that's why I want uh, our version of patient privacy laws to be very different if we do them.
Okay. What is, how is it, is it like simplified, like, what's the content? Is just the name similar, or is it literally just the act, but transcribed?
I have no fucking clue, I did not even know about this prior to uh, you know, really talking about it and figuring out uh, what we should do with this. Essentially, uh, as far as I'm aware, the purpose of something, does this sound like someone is moving constantly above us, by the way?
No.
You guys hear that shit?
So.
You don't hear, you don't hear people walking around?
I hear, I hear, I hear, I hear.
No?
Maybe I was just, I don't know what, I don't know what, I didn't hear it.
But I also hear gunshots sometimes, and nobody else does, and.
None, none, someone, it definitely sounds like someone's on the roof moving.
I have restless, uh, Lexinдрil.
Oh, yes, fucking Michael.
Yeah, that's how he's sitting.
Oh, uh, okay.
My bad.
That's fine, um, so, the uh, the notes on this are simple, this is to enable affordable housing through real estate investment, specifically rent to own, where the only ding to the state is ensuring these kinds of trusts are tax-free. However, the long-term benefit to state comes. What's a trust?
Yeah.
Whatever, I don't, I don't fucking know.
So the rhetorical point I'm making is that the problem with imputing acts from other jurisdictions is that they often use legal terms that are well-defined through decades and decades of jurisprudence, and so when you start doing that, for example, we don't have trust in this jurisdiction. So right away, we'd have to define what a trust is.
Which then opens up to legally, how do you open a trust, and who can, you know? This wa- this wasn't the uh, the actual uh, writing in the uh, proposal, this is, these are more notes that I I have written. Um, instead of trust, we could just write the word thing, it doesn't really matter.
Okay, cool, yeah, I mean, I just, I wanna make sure we're, you know, able to back up whatever we're saying.
Yeah, uh, to ensure this kind of thing is tax-free, however, the long-term benefit to the state comes from the asset fees, the tenant-turned-owner will then be able to pay to the state, which they would not have been able to afford otherwise. Uh, that, that is the purpose of the REIT.
So, basically, it's allowing an entity to buy up properties.
So we're subsidizing slum lords?
Yeah, essentially.
Uh, I don't like.
Yikes, yeah.
Uh, why not?
Let's just stop a group of people from pooling money together, buying up literally all. Let's just stop a group of people from pooling money together, buying up literally all of the properties and then price gouging everybody and forcing them to rent from them forever.
I'll be honest, it's already happening. I had, uh, I had Mister, I, uh, I had Mister K come up to me and pitch to me in the hospital that this legislation had already been passed. So I was kinda expecting this. So that's crazy already. Uh, he was pitching, oh yeah, he was pitching to me and, uh, my husband Fraser, uh, that, that we should get in on this because it's already tax-free because of legislation that have been passed. Yeah.
Was he, wait, hold on. Was, hold on. Was he consulted in developing this legislation? No. So how, why would he know that? I don't fucking know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know either. Um, uh, yeah.
Already taken lots of money from people and bought properties.
Yes.
That, those people have not seen any profits yet, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, th- there's, there has to be, if this was even entertained, there would have to be a limit on how many properties they could purchase.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there would have to be a specified, uh, time limit as to when that house would be sold. They can't own that indefinitely because it, that's quite literally what would happen. A group of people would pool all their money together. They would buy up all of the properties and everybody would be forced to rent from them at forever.
So, as, as far as I'm aware, uh, as far as I've heard, cuz I'm aware that this is happening, they're operating a rent-to-own program, which adds a small overall, um, like, I, I think the number that was quoted to me was, uh, like a hundred thousand above the asking price of the house. Uh, but what these people would get in return is the ability to move out of the government subsidized housing, uh, to live in an apartment, to be able to store things in their apartment, to sleep in a bed that isn't in a jail cell-sized apartment room. Um, and the, the trade-off is that, first of all, uh, they don't have to have five hundred thousand dollars to buy a house immediately. One. Two, uh, they are able to pay instead smaller rent, um, per, uh, fee or charges or whatever. So they'd be, they'd be paying rent, obviously. Uh, and three, um, and it, it is a rent-to-own program, right? So eventually, they would own that house courtesy.
So how, how much is the tax on, on, on property purchases?
Uh, right now, it is thirty percent?
Twenty-four. It was dropped low.
So, wouldn't they be losing money?
Yeah. We would be, we, we can't afford.
Oh, wait, the, the cha- the tax changes went in.
Yeah, they did. I forgot to mention that. Sorry.
Oh, shit, cool.
It happened as we were discussing earlier.
Sick.
Um, one thing as well, uh, because I'll be honest, this has been pitched to me a few times by Mister K and Associates, uh, is that they're renting these homes to numerous people. So you say this is rent-to-own, but to who? They're, they're literally pitching it as roommates so that you can move out of the apartments. So how does that? How does that work?
Well, no, but it doesn't even make sense because.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're, if the house is five hundred K and you're paying even fifteen percent, right? That's, that's what, seventy-five K in tax? So.
It's messy.
If the, if the profit margin is only a hundred K, you're only making twenty-five K on a five hundred thousand dollar investment?
It's free money, though. Right?
And does that also take into account the increase in property value, the more houses that are purchased? Cuz usually, I'm not. Well, no, no. My only thing was, I'm not like an economics major or anything, but aren't REITs usually contingent on interest rates? And I don't think we really have those.
And there's no, there's no way to enforce, uh, like, I, I know for certain that the people who have invested in these properties are not getting any kind of money back. So who enforces that? Uh, is that money taxed? Is the rent taxed? Um, you know?
Look, I'm, I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna say flat out, uh, I kinda, I'm almost at the point of tuning out the rest of the discussion until I figure out how the fuck Mister K is aware of legislation that none of us were even aware of till it was brought here. And is so confident that it's gonna be passed that he's spouting off to one of the board members about how it's already guaranteed.
Yes, clearly he didn't know who I was. The moment I said it, he backtracked a bit and was like, well, no, it's something that's gonna be discussed. Uh, but he pitched it to me before knowing who I was as something that was already.
Did anyone else help you guys craft this mix?
Um, yeah, my lawyer.
Siobhan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, we should probably talk Siobhan then and figure out what's going on.
True. Um, I mean, all of this information and stuff is public, though, right? So what would be the issue with someone in the public knowing about this previously?
Well, you said they, you said they didn't.
Who?
You.
Well, apparently, he fucking does. I didn't say he didn't.
Well, yeah, I, right. So I'm saying, i- if Siobhan is, uh, creating, I guess, legislation suggestions for you and involving people who are in that market, who will profit. Who are then profiting from it, that's probably not great.
And they already own property as well.
Yep.
Yeah, are already doing this, then yeah, that's just.
So what, what do you, what do you guys, well, hold on, hold on, hold on, Crane? What are you guys gonna do about the problem right now, though? Because it is a problem. The, they own the properties. They're going to buy all of them. What are you guys going to do about them?
Does this stop them from doing it? This just gives them tax nuts if they do.
It gives us the ability to afford cheap housing opportunities for people who otherwise do not have. What problem?
You just stated the problem is what, how do we stop them buying all the properties? And then you said the solution is that it gives us the ability to.
No, I was responding to Philippa.
I'm confused.
Well, I was responding to something Philippa said.
The problem with the fact that, uh, that you're stating that they're buying up all the property? Doesn't this just incentivize them to do so? That's what it sounded like with what Mister K was saying to me.
I don't know what Mister K said, do you?
Uh, he pretty much said that, uh, that getting in on this is clever because it won't be taxed anymore because of the legislation.
I, I don't even know if it's taxed anyway. So wait, he wants, he wants you to invest in what? His business scheme?
Uh, yeah, he was just trying to pitch that we should get in on renting a property.
Is, uh, he made a pitch to me, this is like weeks ago. Uh, he didn't mention anything about this REIT thing to me, but like I said, this was weeks ago, but essentially, you are buying, uh, like a percentage of the house, right? So like, I, 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 I give him, you know, uh, let, let's say a hundred thousand dollars and this gets me twenty percent of the house he purchased and then therefore I get twenty percent of the rental income that comes in, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, well, I got a suggestion.
This one's way beyond me. Holy.
Uh, I think that.
It's beyond my understanding.
We should, uh, consider implementing legislation that deals with disclosures, uh, by members of the board. Because if we're going to propose legislation, I think we need to be clear about how involved we are with it. Cuz at this point, I don't know if Siobhan's, uh, involved with the business. She's just on board with it. Uh, I don't know what. But I'd like to know, uh, and legally, I don't know how to get that information.
Are, are you basically suggesting that when we propose legislation, there has to be like, you know, maybe a disclaimer that, you know, isn't public if it gets voted in, but just available to us? Like, who has, like, seen this or helped crafted it before?
Well, I mean, because literally in the, in the, the qualifications to be on the city council and legislation, one of the things that we wrote in there literally says.
Well, who's "we"?
Uh, the federal government, the interim mayor.
And you.
Correct.
Okay, go on.
So, and again, when you guys signed up to run for this, you accepted these conditions. It was on the, the signup on the government website that you're accepting the conditions of the memorandum establishing the city council. And one of the parts in that, uh, piece of legislation of the expectations of the city council and its members is that I have no formal allegiance to any other government agencies and/or special interest groups, which would prevent me from acting in the best interest of the city of Los Santos. So if people are gonna have business investments or ties to business investors that would sway or bias their participation on the council and/or the crafting of legislation, then that's a problem that needs to be disclosed.
Oh.
What's the, uh, what's the, uh, the proper, uh, protocol for disclosing that?
I don't know. We'd have to establish that here. I, I, you know, I didn't think there would be a problem because I thought that, you know, everyone sort of agreed to the policies.
Uh, well, what do you propose?
Gosh. Uh, maybe public figures on the council should have to disclose their investment portfolio? I mean, that's how it works in other jurisdictions is you hold people accountable by public figures have to disclose when they sell or buy stocks, invest in businesses, et cetera, so that their decision-making is an influence.
So how, like, uh, so I'll be, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with full disclosure. So the, the reason that I know so much about this is because, uh, my boyfriend, uh, has been one of the people to invest in one of Mister K's properties. So, but I have not. So, but that's how I know.
Like, for example, I'm, I, all my money is in Ron Oil. So I wouldn't come here trying to, you know, suggest legislation about oil regulation, cuz I'm not kidding. I got two hundred dollars in the bank. And the rest of my net worth is tied up in Ron Oil stock.
Forty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-four in Ron.
How much money you got in Ron right now?
Uh, I don't have that much. I, my portfolio is like twenty-three, twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, I got four thousand in Ron. I've, I've actually bought so much Ron Oil and I've been disappointed every fucking time.
I, well, I bought, I bought the dips, like.
Yeah, if it goes below ninety, you buy. If it goes above, above a hundred.
Yep.
My investments are averaged around eighty-seven. I bought some at ninety, ninety-one, eighty-five.
I got forty-three.
Anyway, uh, I, this is just something that I hadn't really, uh, pondered before because I, you know, I didn't think about. I mean, when I wrote it, I wrote special interest groups in terms of lobbying and stuff to prevent people from taking monetary incentives directly to influence legislation, their votes. But I didn't think about sort of ancillary biases where people might have pre-existing investments and then those business relationships lead to the influence that allows legislation to be selected or cultivated.
Okay, so you guys are concerned with the REIT stuff is that, one, it does not, um, it isn't entirely unique. Uh, two, uh, you don't want slum lords to rule Los Santos, although, side note, they are currently ruling Los Santos.
Uh, yeah, I think we should probably regulate them as opposed to enabling them.
Uh, I'm, I'm for that.
I think that, for example, uh, I think one thing we could do is limit the amount of properties that any one entity can own. So, for example, instead of person, just say entity and therefore, uh, you know, it would prevent a, a company from buying up a bunch of residential housing and then price gouging.
Exactly.
Uh, well, well, let's get on that ship, bruh.
What's up, Dakota?
They got, they got a lot of property.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm, uh, so let's do this. I will, uh, I'll add to my list to draft something related to disclosures for the council. Uh, and then, um.
Can I assist you with that one, Crane?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be helpful. Why don't, why don't, why don't you take point on the disclosures?
Yeah.
Um, and then I'll, uh, I'll start looking into how we could regulate them. Um, I need to talk to people who know about what's been going on with Mister K. I didn't realize it was that widespread. I'd heard little things, like I knew, I knew PD went like, you know, they split a house or whatever, but I didn't know it was, uh.
I have had section K housing pitched to me by four different people. Uh, they are constantly coming to everyone all the time.
The police own a house that he owns, or they rent a house that he owns.
Yeah, they, they rent a house. They don't own it. And they're paying in what I would describe as an outrageous amount. Uh, as, as far as disclosures, so I can start spitballing together a, a rough idea, are we saying investment portfolios slash business relationships you may have?
Yeah, I think that'd be fair.
I'm just curious also, and, um, again, if anyone knows more about this than I do, please let me know. Uh, those are, REITs are typically run in contri- like, by a business entity, right? And as far as where we're, there's no recognized businesses in the city, right?
That's the other thing I'm concerned about is, uh, so if, 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 if this conglomerate is buying up houses and then creating tenant relationships, we don't even have fucking tenant laws.
Yep.
So what happens if a tenant sues and says that the landlord isn't holding up their end of the responsibility? What is the landlord even defined as? Where's the oversight? And once again, this is why I'm loath to introduce sweeping concepts, cuz now we got a can of worms of defining an entire fucking concept of landlord-tenant law.
Oh, I, that's something that we should be willing to do, though.
I agree. I'm just, you know, it's a lot to know that it just exists already before we've even had a chance to discuss it. Um, and I, I'd, I'd wonder, I'd have to, I guess we'd have to get a look at a contract. Maybe we'll ask one of the PD who is invested in one of these houses and get a look at how it's written and, yeah, that'd be helpful.
Yep.
Okay, uh, well, I don't feel comfortable bringing that one to a vote.
No.
Yeah, I'm not, not in favor.
Yeah, probably best.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Next is the.
Real, real quick, cuz we're still on a similar subject. We mentioned entities and houses. Are we, wanna at least put a stopgap on it right now so it doesn't get worse?
Yeah.
Uh, we gotta prepare something for a vote.
Yeah, I don't even know what we'd be voting on necessarily.
We have to delay it till next week. I got, we gotta have time to at least write some shit up.
Alright.
Investigate, see what the contracts are like. I don't wanna go blind.
Okay. Um, the next thing I wish to discuss is, hold on, trying to find it, my, uh, my documents here.
Why does it sound like Vietnam outside?
Yeah, I heard that. That's, uh, something crazy is going on.
Chain explosion of cars, maybe?
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, well, what's going on, Dakota? What's the dispatch saying?
Hold on, I'm listening, I'm listening.
Well, it's top now. Uh, I don't think there is an active emergency at the moment. It could just be, uh, I don't know if anyone's noticed, but, uh, the locals, while we were all gone, somehow got worse at driving and, uh. That's cuz they're all speeding faster now.
Everybody's speeding.
Okay, we, uh, we ready for the next one, boys?
I said, get mad brick outside.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, uh, Meryl Amnesty Act. I'm gonna share it. Uh, establishes the, uh, the ability for the mayor office to issue pardons.
You shared it again?
Yes. Uh, take, take a quick gander of that, lads.
I gotta stand up. I don't get it all the way down here.
Oh, okay.
Uh, go ahead and do it again.
Boom.
Got it.
Uh, uh, of important note here is the, uh, the, uh, so I spoke to Malton about this a couple of days ago. Uh, to get some actual good verbiage in there, in here. Uh, and the second paragraph, or the second paragraph, the second blurb there, uh, a guilty verdict must be rendered in order to qualify for a meryl pardon with a minimum of quarter time served. So this isn't like a, like a get out of jail free card from the mayor office. They, they, they are, there is some punishment that must be rendered regardless.
What does, uh, having the record sealed mean?
I think it means they take it off of their record, right? The punished, the charges removed.
Right.
Is there any, uh, charges that you would not be willing to remove off of a record or sealed?
Um. Fuck, that's a hard one. Uh, I don't know. Uh, what do you think, Dakota?
Uh, if I was gonna spitball off the top of my mind right now, uh, impeachment and, uh, treason would be two that I would not be willing to have sealed off of somebody's record.
Uh, I'm for that. But, uh, those are two good ones.
Uh, I, hmm, I, I, I go either way on this, but perjury maybe in that category?
Okay, perjury.
Evolved in the court of law, you know, I think that's a pretty big deal.
Terrorism.
Terrorism. About, how about all capital crimes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Man, well, okay, so I'm just, I'm trying to understand. Uh, so clemency is something we've had in the past in this jurisdiction where the mayor, at the point of someone being convicted by a court for a capital crime, could step in and pardon the person from being executed. They could stay the execution.
Oh, okay.
Um, but amnesty is a whole other super judicial concept. The idea of just wiping a record. Well, what would be the, how, how, would there be any kind of like, i- is it just pure discretion? Like, how does that work?
Uh, anyone got some food first?
I'm all out.
Um, peer discretion on who the meryl, mayor office would pardon?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I assume so.
I don't know that I'm in favor of blanket authority.
Cuz then we get to the obvious question.
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things, like, for example, a mayor can be impeached.
Right.
And a mayor can be removed. But impeachment doesn't necessarily con contain criminal charges or punishment. It's just removal from office. So what's to stop a lame duck mayor from deciding they don't want to rerun for election or they just don't want to be mayor anymore? Uh, and they just grant amnesty to a bunch of people for favors.
I I was more thinking about a person granting amnesty to themselves.
I didn't even think of that. That's another problem.
Um, yeah, that's the main question I was thinking of.
My vision for pardoning isn't something that I would be able to do to myself.
Right, but we gotta, you know, proof it for, you know, less responsible folks. But I I still, I I don't know, I can how do we safeguard it from being abused in the way I described?
Put a cap on the number of people you can grant per term? To start at least.
Doesn't that just increase the value of it?
Yeah, it kind of does that way.
That just means it becomes more, you get more money for the one part.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
So, uh, do what do you guys feel about pardoning in general?
I don't like the general concept. I think uh, I I I understood clemency because typically, right, the way I view it is, I'm more of like, uh, I don't know if I ever had this conversation with you, Max. I've had it with some of you here. Uh, my view of justice is that I'm not really a a values and morals person. I'm not the person who's sitting up there being like, you're an evil person. You deserve to be punished because you're wicked. Uh, I just think that laws are how we enforce societal norms. So I don't view a drug trafficker or, you know, a bank robber as a necessarily evil person. I just view them as someone deserving of punishment. For example, I decided one time that I wanted to shoot Officer Carter with a beanbag shotgun in the chest of the traffic stop. Uh, I decided it was worth going to jail for the assault and battery charge because I thought it was funny. Uh, and I, you know, accepted the consequences. I also used to, oh, yeah, I also used to drive around everywhere drunk driving. I used to speed 104 miles an hour. And I was fully aware that if I got caught, I would get my license taken away and I'd have to take the bus. I accepted those consequences, right? Um, so I I don't, I don't have a problem with clemency because I view clemency as sort of society's moral compass, right? If a mayor wants to embrace the concept of mercy and prevent someone's life from being taken at the zero hour, you know, on the hangman's gallows, that ain't a judicial issue. That's a social issue, right? And that's why I get clemency. But pardoning is a distinctly like judicial concept uh, that I I don't really align with because I feel like uh, now we're subjectively deciding who's deserving of punishment or not after the courts have already made their decision.
But what? Well, the 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 i- the idea here is that the mayor, the 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 popular vote, the elected official to speak for the people of Los Santos should have the discretionary ability to provide a pardon to the people that voted him in, the people that he is supposed to represent.
Yeah.
At at a base level, I am in favor of some form of pardon, just because it it sounds like in particular felonies are going to be holding a lot of weight with with future things. And maybe this, this is a little cart before the horse. But in things such as business regulations or ownerships, or even just working certain jobs, uh, since felonies are are weighted much higher, I I think there can be.
What's the calculus? What's the calculus of the difference between expungement and a pardon?
Yeah, shouldn't they just get expunged? We want to set up that program.
That is something I'm going to propose as well.
Right. So I'm saying, you know, if, because I'm assuming we're at some point, we're going to install some kind of expungement system.
Mm hmm.
So my question is, is what? How does a pardon differ and why?
The pardon is on the spot and the pardon someone of a like a particular happening, all right, right? The, uh, like, let's say, uh, you know, they go through the whole court case because a pardon wouldn't be able to be issued until after a court case is concluded. Um, and the whole host of charges that they've been, uh, given would be, uh, you know, in in the eyes of that particular mayor at that time, would be able to be pardoned and sealed. Uh, so essentially it would function similar to an expungement, but without, you know, the the fi- the fee or the the process involved in like petitioning for it.
And obvi- like, when it comes to pardoning, I mean, like, obviously, it's very circumstantial as well. Uh, I don't know, uh, I I think there should be a pardoning process for sure.
So, well, I'm, I guess, let me rephrase that. I'm not asking like mechanically, you know, procedurally how things work. I'm asking like in terms of you as a mayor, why would you decide to pardon someone versus tell them to go through an expulsion? What would be a scenario that would inspire you to pardon somebody?
Uh, someone who is not able to afford the the expulsion process?
And and there are people that
Someone, someone, someone who does not necessarily deserve the, uh, the the requisite two week waiting period to actually to be surveilled in in their, the process of their expungements. That sort of punishment isn't really deserving.
So you think, you think that if we establish a a procedure for expungements and we all agree and vote on it, that then you should be able to decide when it doesn't matter?
No.
Well, that's kind of what you're saying.
No, you you are placing a a higher value upon the pardon simply because the circumstances are different. They're not, they they both serve a purpose. They would both serve a great purpose, one a one along the other.
Uh, just to spitball an idea here, what if a pardon had just a limitation on the amount of crimes someone had? Maybe like, they can be pardoned, but only if they have very limited felonies, um, or something. I I don't know, just just to spitball any idea that can make it work.
I think unfortunate, well, not unfortunately, but I do understand. If you were to pardon someone, it seems like it would only be to seal something off of their record that couldn't be removed through expungement, which would render us making it only certain crimes are pardonable obsolete, if that makes sense.
Uh, can you expunge every crime through?
Yeah, I'm on, that's what, no, well, in the, so in the past, when we had expungement legislation, there were a number of crimes that were called heinous acts and those were not able to be expunged. And so the worry that I'm having in is it feels like we're uh, I'll freeze this. It's something I run into with the judiciary a lot. Uh, typically, the reason why we don't do direct appeals to bench trial or trial verdicts is because effectively in a realm where we don't have uh, much di- diversity in seniority between the judges, you'd just be replacing one judge's discretion and opinion for the other one. Um, it's kind of just like a do over. And I guess my concern is similar to what Dakota's espousing is that if we install all these protocols and procedures surrounding expungements and the amount of time you have to wait, uh, let's say someone gets an expungement, we install like waiting periods until they can do another one, that kind of thing. Um, you know, and we regulate all that and we agree on it, then it kind of just feels like at some point the mayor is just deciding that his opinion is better than what we've all agreed on.
Well, what do you do to a mayor that that abuses their power?
Well, there, they'd have to be impeached, but the qualifications for impeachment are related to gross incompetence or negligence. And if
We just add pardon abuse in there.
If a pardon is purely discretionary, there's no way to quantify abuse.
Well, you guys are all smart adults. You can, if it seems like a serious problem, like a mayor is, uh, or I guess the future counsel, I assume they'll be smart individuals. They, how would they not be able to determine that someone is just flagrantly abusing?
We're just doing the volleyball effect. So we all establish our collective judgment as to what expungements and punishments for crimes are. We have a judiciary that determines if people are legal. Then the mayor gets pure discretionary power to decide if someone deserves to be exempt from the entire system that everyone agreed on. And then in order to counteract that mayoral ability, the council gets discretionary power to decide if the mayor used it, their pure discretionary power wrong. It's just kicking the ball back over the volleyball net, which is what I'm talking about with judges. You're just supplanting one person's subjective opinion for the other one back and forth. You guys wouldn't be able to tell if Darth Sidious was about to fucking declare the Republic no longer relevant? Well, that, but that's what I'm saying is i- it's not as insidious, for lack of a better phrasing word, uh, that as you're making it out to be. I'm saying that I think the very nature of pure discretion isn't of itself insidious enough. And I don't think there's a way to look at pure discretion and point out when it's used well and poorly. Otherwise, it's just, again, my opinion versus yours.
Hard to keep track of this shit.
It's not the opinion of one person. It's the opinion of a group of people who've been elected or chosen to enforce the will of the state.
Right, but you're saying the mayor has the
Yeah, is it a group or is it the mayor?
Yeah, one person's making the veto. That would be the mayor, not us.
The mayor was chosen by the populace and therefore it represents the interest of the majority of the people of Los Santos.
Uh, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just lead or conclude with the fact that I think there's a reason why there are branches of government. This is a very good example of it.
Well, I I will conclude also that there are checks and balances for a reason that if a mayor is abusing their power.
Yeah, but I'm, but again, we're, we're, we're just back to the example I brought up in the beginning, which is the mayor doesn't want to be mayor anymore, so he just solicits.
I'm just trying to get the key.
That's what I call a lame duck. Doesn't matter what they do presumably because they're not going to run for office again.
Yeah, there's no, there's no punishing someone who's already on the way out.
And then all those people have already had those charges removed and then you're just kind of fucked.
But we need, we, we as a group need to operate in a forward-thinking manner. I I am a, I am a reactive, not proactive person. The reactive or sorry, the proactive, uh, stifling of certain progress in Los Santos is a a a stagnant, cancerous thing that will eventually drive us back into our holes and be afraid to propose things that will eventually affect the entirety of the people who live here. Uh, not just about pardoning. The if 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 you, if we are afraid to punish a mayor or to sit down and figure out a way to punish a bear who's going to abuse that kind of power, how can we in good confidence state that we ourselves are not able to, um, like truly begin to like police, like why are we so afraid of punishing after the fact? That's what I want to know.
Because there's no way to punish the action that that resolves the issue.
There is. We can come up with one, Crane.
Okay, so what is your solution to someone who's a lame duck and then pardons their friend?
The council will vote on whether or not they believe he was a lame duck and then he will go to jail. We are the power.
So then we take the guy who was let out of jail and put him back in jail?
Yeah, sure. It's not called double jeopardy. He's not being charged again. It's the same fucking charge.
But he was already pardoned.
Double de- double jeopardy is a, a, that is a a concept that was established with years and years. Legal precedents. How does that have any place in Los Santos?
Yeah.
That's a good point. I'm gonna tell PD they can charge.
I could give you a hypothetical.
Sure. We'll call it the Cornwood Proclamation. If you forget to write a search warrant, you're still good to go.
Uh, okay, so I have a hypothetical situation here. Uh, I find a brick of weed. A brick of weed has two DNA prints on it. I bring in a suspect and their DNA print is on that brick of weed and I charge them for the possession of it because their DNA matches. Uh, so they've been charged with possession of that, that brick. I arrest another person three weeks later who also has DNA that matches finding or the DNA matched finding it on that brick of weed. Can I charge that person for possession of that as well?
Can you?
I don't know.
Well, you should know. You know the law. You're a cop.
That's constructive position.
Someone's already charged for it, though?
Yeah, but well, okay, well, that, but how do you, how do you prove the temporal nature of the?
DNA being on it.
Right. And so I'm saying, uh, if I possess a gun and I hand you a gun, you also possessed the gun.
Correct. Okay, perfect.
So we both committed the crime.
Uh, I think, I think that impeachment perfectly would, uh, is, okay, so listen up. Let's say there's a lame duck. Let's say he decides to shoot off some pardons toward the end of his, uh, term. Uh, let's say he pardons like five people. Uh, let's say those people are uh, honestly, e- even if he does do this, uh, like, I, what's the issue? What, what, what? No, what, what, like, like, what, what could someone like that? What kind of, what kind of connections could that person have? What kind of crimes could have possibly been committed?
Is the, is the prolific ex-terrorist with the face tattoo asking that question?
No, what, okay, how many, how many acts of terrorism have happened in Los Santos after the collapse? How many murders have happened since the the?
At least one.
He has not been charged with that yet.
Let's just say one, someone, someone's been charged with terrorism.
That's true.
Okay.
Senor Buns.
Yeah, well, okay, so we put one and one, so let's continue.
Okay, I I don't have terrorist connections anymore. I don't have, I don't have criminal connections anymore. Uh, what in what realis- I know, I I know, what in reali- in what realistic world? Because I'm, I'm a very unique individual, okay? Um, in what world would there be a mayor that is elected that would would have the ability and proximity to people to actually issue a pardon to someone that would be dangerous to society? And he lost. He lost, though.
But we should also be giving the benefit of the doubt because this shit happened five years ago. It's good to bring it up, but we should also be giving people the benefit of the doubt.
And we, we can't live in the past. We, well, hold on, there is a whole different set of checks and balances for the mayor now that did not exist five years ago. And the 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 ab- the ability to abuse their power is so miniscule in comparison to what was possible before.
What if a request for a pardon came before the city council then and not just one? There's two people, there's two, there's two people talking right now. It is one person, go ahead and then the other, go ahead, please. Cantor, go ahead. Sure. I just can say, what if someone requests a pardon from the entire council then? There you go, there's checks, um.
We, uh, I had initially entertained that thought. Um, the the reality of the situation is, is that a a pardon is typically executed and like, like a hasty manner as opposed to, you know, waiting for once a week for us to like vote on the matter. And then we have to research the case as a group and kind of figure out. You know, and then there might be disagreements and it be- it becomes a
Are typically for lame ducks and capital crime.
Typically.
Yeah. But not all. So, so, okay, but so if if we're gearing them not to be towards lame ducks and capital crimes, then, uh, it wouldn't need to be hasty.
I missed what Crane said already.
Isn't the, isn't the idea behind all of this that we, that we have the ability to be the change that we want to be?
This is something I'm like, that we aren't out of practice.
Ourselves with just like ta- bureaucracy tape after bureaucracy tape. We we passed like fucking four new legis- like laws and legislations here right now.
Yeah, we've been killing it.
Yeah, it's good. Anybody have food? I'm gonna pass out.
I got food.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have food. I lied.
I have plenty, so.
Just gonna bounce it on your chair.
I I, I think a good idea for this whole pardoning thing would be to prevent a mayor from being able to issue pardons in like the last month of their term or some shit.
Hmm.
Or if they're up for impeachment, they can't issue any pardons.
What was that last part, Max? I'm sorry.
Hold on, I'm stuck in the chair, table.
Sorry, I get antsy after a few hours on my ass, so I have to stand.
Um, I think that there are ways to have a pardon be something that that is something that the mayor who represents the people of Los Santos by majority could use while also in a hasty manner uh, in in a decisive manner while also being subject to oversight and, uh, the ability to rep- like review them for a potential abuse. Um, case in point, uh, last couple of weeks of their term, uh, they uh, last couple of weeks of their term, uh, they can't issue pardons, uh, or if they're under investigation, uh, to be impeached.
For, this is for.
Just like situations in which they would probably do lame duck shit, just make it so that they can't do it.
This is the entire purpose of the city council.
I don't, I don't want absolute power, I definitely don't want absolute power for some fucking jackass, like, you know, three months from now.
Yeah, well, I don't think you do. I think the problem is, is that you're viewing things under the lens of you being a responsible adult human being. And what I'm suggesting is someone who sat across from many a mayor is that you're the exception, not the rule. So we have to plan for not you, Max.
Like I said earlier, you have to expect the worst of people because guaranteed if there is a way to fuck the system, somebody is going to do it.
I, 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 I don't like that mentality because it's kind of a cynics mentality that puts a, 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 a dark cloud over every single interaction that I, that I will have to do as a government official.
I hate to break it to you, Max, the reason why all the regulations are on you as the mayor right now, the reason why we have a treasurer, the reason why we even have a city council is because, uh, what's the adage, fool me 13 times, shame on me? I mean, I, 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 I went years with benefit of the doubt, I'm, I'm all out of it.
Uh, I'm not, and I, I'm an optimist.
God bless.
I believe in people and, and I, I, while, while it would be easy to blame those past mayors for obvious corruption or embezzlement or whatever, uh, the, the onus lies on the people who crafted the previous system that allowed it to be abused like that.
I agree, which is why I'm so heavily scrutinizing something that allows pure discretion.
And we should scrutinize it too, I agree with you.
I, I'm definitely in the position of really wanting to set the cities up for success in the future. It's not so much thinking cynically, it's just protections, you know? Just want to make sure that everyone's safe and taken care of. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what do you guys think of, uh, what are some scenarios in which, uh, lame ducking can occur? Like literally like if they're about to be impeached or if they're on the way out or what?
I mean, it could happen at any point. Yeah, they, they could say, oh, this person's offering me a hundred K for this, that's worth going down for.
Hmm.
Well, if, how do, how do you prove something like that, right?
You don't, that's why I'm so concerned.
Yeah, it's almost impossible to prove.
That was my exact point that I made earlier when you said, well, the city council should be able to determine when it's being abused. And the problem is, how do you prove that? And the answer is, it's nearly impossible because it's pure discretion.
I got elected based upon a series of campaign promises that I spoke to people that said that I would sit here and I would petition for a forward thinking, uh, 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 unbound to the past council, that, that I would sit here and if I heard talk like this, that I would tell you guys, listen, just because something can go wrong doesn't mean we need to bury our head in the sand and try to even prevent any amount of progress simply because something could go wrong. We, we have, we have more protections now and more checks and balances now than any other mayor in the history of Los Santos.
I agree, I just think there should be some on this.
Encouraging options, yeah.
So what, what do you think, Crane? What, what's, what's, what's a restriction that you would like to see on the mayoral pardon?
I, I genuinely do not know how to evaluate someone's ability for pure subjective discretion into a qualitative state that can be viewed objectively. Because you're, you're trying to analyze someone's decision making when there are no bounds to that decision making except for their own mind. Uh, the only thing I can think of is that in the past, uh, to draw a parallel, when we have entertained the concept of parole for people who were previously sentenced to life without parole, uh, it has only been considered under the guise of a panel that was made up specifically of, uh, the victim of the original crime, uh, a representative from the PD, a representative from, uh, psych, you know, it determines the person's ability to reintegrate into society, uh, and, you know, and a judicial member. Uh, so in this case, because the mayoral pardon would be extrajudicial, uh, you could say that the, uh, mayor could convene a pardon committee, uh, and perhaps then would need to justify their reasoning to the people involved with the crime. Um, and I think that would be a good way to sort of balance the authority, but I, I don't know that there's a way to effectively balance the authority after the fact. I think the balancing would have to come prior to the action. Which is why I, I generally don't know if I support the idea of pure pardons because I don't know if there's an effective way to balance it before the action occurs. I, listen, I, I'm all for second chances, which is why I've been known to be extremely liberal with expungements. Hell, I, I let Rami run for mayor and during his term when he was trying to get expunged, which by the way was going to end the day of the election signups closing, uh, he had three warrants for his arrest during that period. And I told him, if you don't get caught for those warrants, then technically you haven't been charged with a crime. So I guess you meet the requirement. So I've been seen as extremely liberal and a lot of PD probably think that I'm way too, you know, coddling of people and way too nice. And so they probably think that I shouldn't have pardon authority because I'd be too nice to certain people. Uh, so from that perspective, I, I struggle with finding a way to make this something, uh, that isn't in and of itself abused. Not, not in potential, I mean, just in general, I, I don't know how to balance it.
To spitball maybe like a compromise here, what if the mayor had pardoning power, but before, you know, the order could be signed, the council would have to approve it with a simple majority and then that way it's also.
I don't think it should be us, I don't think it should be us because who, why are we, why are we any more educated on pardons than anybody else? Max is right, he has, he has the, uh, the mandate of the people, right? But I don't know why, you know, why we're any more in a better position than anyone else, I, I don't know.
I, I would disagree that you guys aren't in a position for that because we are all elected representatives of different aspects of what it means to live in Los Santos. Uh, some of, uh, people like Mr. Crane are hyper experts in their field. Um, I, I don't know how long Dakota's been a cop, I know Ed has, has been mayor, deputy mayor three times. Uh, Juno was a cop, Michael Simone was a hyper criminal.
To be clear, also, Ed and myself, uh, and, uh, uh, wait, is it Ed and myself? Ed and myself aren't elected.
Okay, okay, anyway, my point is.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah, the, we all are, I think we are qualified to make that kind of decision because we represent so many different walks of life and we have so many different perspectives that when something like that were to come to the table, then we would be able to review it impartially.
I need to have myself a power roll day, it's one of these days, I have not had mine in a couple of days.
So mayor nominates pardons and then the council votes on them?
Yeah.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
Uh, does that mean you recuse yourself from the vote since you're nominating it upfront?
No.
I, I actually, I would, I would suggest something. I think, I think that, uh, I would think that once the pardons nominated by the mayor.
For some of these days.
Uh, I don't, well, I don't know if the judiciary should be involved.
Are you hiring?
They, they were involved in their case.
Because we were involved in the, in the adjudication.
What, or what if I was the one that prosecuted it?
Hmm, this is what I'm saying, this is why it's hard to, to figure out who's, who's in an objective place. So you either go fully objective, which means you need people not connected whatsoever, or you go fully subjective, which is what I was talking about earlier with parole, where you have the people most informed that you need to convince.
I, I think pure subjective is good, uh, on this case.
I agree, I think so, I think the way parole is mocked up could work, so we could get the judge who ruled on the initial case, the lead prosecutor on the initial case and the victim. And so the mayor would nominate a person for a pardon and then would need to pitch to these people why he believes this person should be pardoned.
Right, perfect.
I think that's actually, I think that's pretty fair because then that removes the potential for abuse, right? Because those people aren't gonna, you know, the victim and the prosecutor and the judge ain't gonna take a bribe.
Right.
So I, I guess then, uh, is this something that we're wanting like Max or whoever to like write up and, and we could see the official proposal next week?
And we'll revisit it, yeah, for the vote.
Well, just for, uh, for funsies, why don't we, uh, why don't we put the, uh, the, the pure pardon to a vote?
You're talking about like, as, as it's written, what you shared?
As, as I shared with you guys.
Okay.
Just mayor 100%.
Uh, we'll start with me and then go to Dakota, uh, I vote aye.
I vote nay. Sorry, I'm, uh, skip me, I'm, I'm relooking at it real quick.
Cantor?
Oh, nay, sorry.
Crane?
Uh, let me review the exact language, skip me for a sec.
I'm very open to another proposal though.
Of course, I just wanted to see, uh, what your guys' thoughts are, thoughts are on this one.
Forgot Walton's name for a second.
Yeah, don't, don't ever feel upset, I, like, I just want to say, if you guys need to say nay to me, uh, that isn't going to, I, I, I ta, I'm taking this very serious and I know that,
Hell yeah, I'm glad.
Yeah, I just, I don't want, this is nothing personal.
Of course, I'm very open to these discussions either way, even if I disagree in the end.
Yep, um.
I only write down Juno because Juno's easier to remember than fucking, I'd look at my notes and be like, who the fuck is Sweeney? I don't know.
What's, uh, section three about TBD commencement?
Who cares?
Uh, that's just information that we need to, uh, fill in later, like, once the, the law goes into effect. Certain, uh, details, I suppose, that would be tossed in there that we would be discussing here.
Oh, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm a no as written just because I think it's, uh, extremely broad.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, uh, nay for the same reasons, but.
Uh, Juno?
Uh, aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Etta?
Nay.
Okay, so this, this motion does not pass, uh, it's three to five. Uh, I will work on a revised, uh, pardoning method.
Grass to eat me.
Uh, and let us move on to the next, uh, matter.
Shit, now he really wants to kill me.
Uh, the marriage act.
Okay.
Let me get on the table.
Sorry, just, just out of curiosity, how many? Uh, uh, out of curiosity, how many things are we, how many other things are we going to discuss from the?
Uh, I got like two more, I think.
Okay, so three in total?
I think so.
Alright.
I'm gonna move here so I can share with everybody.
Oh, thank you.
Um, so the, the purpose of this marriage act would be essentially to reinstate, uh, there was a brief period of time in the past where spousal privilege was enabled, but it was kind of, uh, dialed back on because people were trying to abuse the system and come in and be like, hey, I want to marry this guy, blah, blah, blah. Um, so thi, this, this act serves two purposes and that's to establish a, an official recognition from the state, uh, for marriages, one, and to certify, uh, them and to also, uh, make it so that, uh, spouses don't have to, like, that would be the one perk for being married is that you wouldn't have to testify against your spouse, which I think is a great idea. Something that doesn't currently exist in the state, uh, something that did have potential for abuse in the past, but it's something that is also, it's very easy to prevent abuse, uh, by way of, uh, for example, uh, Kermy and some lady with one hand, I forget what her name was, was trying to. Nana, yeah, they were, they were getting married, but there was a judge there, uh, to officiate and the judge was like, yeah, you guys shouldn't be getting married. You know, it's, it's really as simple as that. Um, I would like to see judges in a position of power to really go over, um, determining whether or not someone is serious about their marriage because they would be receiving a state perk in the realm of, uh, not having to testify against your spouse. And that's pretty much it.
I, uh, I, I like the concept, but I would like to see a cost associated with it, you know, tax purposes.
Oh, yeah. I, I meant to include the, uh, the cost in there, I, I would like to see, uh, fifty thousand dollars to get married.
What's, uh, what's legal age?
Holy shit.
Eighteen.
And they, the, the, the second, and I think this helps with the abuse standpoint, um, I, I would not like that spousal privilege to kick in until, let's just say 21 days after they get married, right?
Good idea, um, so we could drop the price down 25K, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. We're only one. Uh, no, we'll just do 25K, I think.
I, I also keep it in similar of like one child, like you could only be married once and a divorce is also 25K or something.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So essen, essentially this, the, the purpose of this would to, would be to establish spousal privilege, um, that there would be a period of time after two individuals are married that they would, they would not be permitted spousal privilege in the event of a court case that transpires then. Uh, and they would have to pay a fee to get the official license and certificate.
Uh, I, I, I just to clarify, I was at 21 days or there's like already like a case on the, the docket against, because I, we know how some of that shit can take a while, right? Like, if there's anything pending against them, it can't be, but if there's not, then just three weeks later.
That's up to the judge, right? So, you know, if someone wants to get married, the due diligence of the judge should be to go to PD and say, hey, are there any open investigations into these people?
Okay, then yeah, just the 21 days then, is, and.
Okay, um, so this, this one seems pretty clear cut. Uh, we've established a fee for getting married, a fee for getting divorced, we've established the, uh, restrictions on spousal privilege. We've established what spousal privilege is and we have established that the state would recognize officially in the form of a certificate and actual marriage between two individuals in the state of Los Santos, all in favor?
Uh, I have a question.
Wait, wait.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Go on.
Uh, number one, this is nullified if you get a divorce, yes or no?
The spousal privilege, yeah, because it's not spouses.
Hmm.
So, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, you have another one, Crane?
My biggest thing is there needs to be some kind of, uh, rider in here or some kind of addendum that, uh, disclaims the existence or possibility, uh, of, uh, any kind of asset, uh, splitting in divorce. I'm not, I'm not trying to hear divorce cases.
Yeah, yeah, I don't blame you, yeah.
Uh, I, I was trying to be specific in, in, uh, stating that the only empowerment would be spousal privilege, not actual like inheritances or whatever.
Yeah, people are gonna try it because they can.
Well, do you tell them no?
Think, uh, uh, you know, med, from a medical standpoint, I know in a lot of, um, you know, in a lot of areas around the country, um, spouses are kind of automatically the main port of contact for emergency contacts unless stated otherwise anywhere. Um, that could be something that we, you know, we involve so that this is even more valuable for people to do.
Okay, good point.
Yeah, I'm good with it, I think, I think as long as we just include the caveat about, uh, you know, uh, inherent legal rights to assets in divorce or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, I, I like it if it's a tiny bit more expanded, it seems like, but I.
Yeah, I have one more, uh, so.
Go on, go on.
For this, for, as far as I'm aware from my knowledge, spousal privilege extends to private communication between two married individuals and there are third party exceptions to this rule sometimes.
Hmm.
I think we figure that out in court, I think spousal privilege.
Okay, okay.
Is the default, right? So the baseline is, I understand it is if myself, uh, and, uh, Cantor are married, uh, and I get, you know, accused of embezzlement, uh, the cops can't use text messages between Cantor and I as evidence.
Got it.
Because those are privileged communications between a husband and wife.
All right, as long as it's very, you know.
Anything else, anything else related to, you know, trying to argue about, well, the conversation was out in public, in a public place and someone overheard it and therefore there was no expectation of privacy, we'll hear all that shit in court.
Okay, that's fine, as long as I, that's where my mind goes immediately, so that's, that's good.
Hmm.
I'm just making a quick little amendment, uh, to this.
Sounds good.
Will you, uh, reshare it once it's amended, please?
Yeah, I don't know how the formatting will be, but.
Okay.
Uh, as long as you guys don't care.
No, no.
So I, I, I have, the fee for marriage will be, uh, to be recognized by the state is twenty five thousand dollars, the fee for a divorce is the same. State shall certify a marriage after all of the recipients, uh, requirements have been met. The state similarly reserves the right to delay or decline marriage between two individuals if a court case is on the docket concerning one or both of, of the individuals. Um, wait, 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 hold on, we, we decided the 21 days would just be enough, right?
Yeah, because active investigation.
Yeah, because a judge, a judge is gonna check on all that stuff anyway.
It doesn't even need to be in there, I'll just train the judges on it.
Okay, um, the state, uh, now we're right, the state similarly reserves the right to, um, what's the word, fuck it? what's the word? Fucking, uh. Oh no, I'm just gonna remove this. Hang on. Uh, I, hold on, just give me a minute to finish. I, I can't think of it.
Very fun.
Quick, everyone start saying random words.
Hmm.
I, mom. I feel like I'm being the fly on the omen guy over here.
You're fine, Malcolm. It's literally your job.
Hmm.
If, uh, oh, what happens if two people get married and they both have already adopted a child? Under the, uh, previous legislation, does that mean that the, uh?
Yeah, but it is.
Yeah, I think that's fair enough.
Okay, so there would be automatically like ingratiated to the family.
Out anymore.
Yeah, true.
No.
Not in front of me.
Um, okay, so the, the final blurb that I wrote is, uh, in its entirety will be the fee for marriage recognized by the state, blah, blah, blah. Um, the state will certify a marriage after all these requirements have been met for twenty one days after the marriage has been approved by the state. Spousal privilege does not apply to either individual.
Hmm.
Um.
I, I need to start my phone for.
Sure. Uh, were, were there any other, uh, concerns that I missed? Question mark?
I'm gonna. You have in there, uh, the, the filing fee and the divorce fee?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's like. Previous existing one out?
Married people would have to get remarried under the court.
Um.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, all marriages are not recognized unless they've been adjudicated under the new system. And adoptions. You're all orphans.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Is there like a disqualifier for this?
For marriage?
Well, okay, meaning, uh, two people get married while there's a docket posting, so the other doesn't have to testify against the other. Does that disqualify them? But the judge would just deny him in that case.
Okay, the judge, judge has discretion and I'll train the judges on what to look for.
Understood.
Should I include in this, uh, a, a line about judges having discretion when it comes to actually deciding whether or not two individuals are fit to be married?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, it should only be, it should only be, yeah, I, I agree. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be like subjective, personal discretion. It should be like, uh, the judge should be the person tasked with examining if there are any legal matters that would prevent the marriage, such as ongoing investigations.
Yeah. And then there is the limit that you can only be married to one person at, at a time.
Like, I know what's going on downstairs, but what is going on downstairs?
One, polygamy shouldn't be allowed around here anyway. Two, uh, that would be an issue with. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Privilege with everyone would be crazy.
I know people that would do it.
Oh, yeah.
Why is that being run so often?
That is a really good question.
Verdict, maybe? Contempt?
Maybe.
Even then, it's a lot of times.
I wrote, uh, the judge examining the potential marriage reserves the right to decline the individual's ability to be married in the eyes of the state if they are pressing, uh, if there are pressing legal and judicial reasons to do so. Is that fine?
Perfect. Yeah, as long as it's not discretionary. I don't want judges being like, I don't like your kind, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Oh my god, yeah.
Uh, was, was, was there anything else?
Hmm, can you just reshare one more time just so you see the updated version?
Yeah, mine.
Sounds good. Uh, hopefully the formatting doesn't suck. It does, but I'll clean up a little bit.
Is anyone still having that issue where someone shares like, uh, a, a note or something with them? And they can't scroll all the way to the bottom on their phone or has that been?
That's fixed. That's fixed.
Yeah, I was, I was okay with it.
All right.
The, the best way to avoid any problems with shared documents is go to the place where you would have that document on your phone. If you were the owner.
Shared it.
And then accept the document. That prevents all issues.
Yeah, I was having, she was getting, uh, invoices.
I just go to my documents and then I hit it accept and then it opens perfectly every time.
Got it.
I think this is good.
Um, what, uh, good. Uh, so in, in the same vein of this, uh, let's go ahead and outlaw polygamy. I think that's an easy one.
Yeah, yeah, hell yeah.
Yeah.
That hasn't been honest with.
Yeah.
Could just add it as a, in this, can you?
Okay, so wait, is there any nays to the, the marriage legislation?
Nice. Good.
Cool.
Um, we could add it in here, but it would, we could just make it illegal. What do we, where do you think, Crane? Do you think we should add it in this or do you think we should add it in?
I think it's added in this. Yes, uh, cause you know, it's kind of like the shit sandwich idea. We sneak it in here.
Okay, um, you wanna toss it in at the bottom there or something? When you go to add it to the MDT?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll find a spot for it.
I think you should put it in the middle, so maybe people don't read it.
It's gonna be in the middle. It's gonna be in the middle.
That's fine.
The shit sandwich. That's, that's how it works.
Harperts.
Um, so keeping in theme with the other two heavy proposals, uh, the pardoning and the, uh, the one child act, um, I did have something written up for expungement. Uh, the issue is that it is a, the, the, the process by which is something that we probably all haven't been considering this week. Uh, therefore, when I were to present something like this, I, uh, it would turn into a long discussion of us kind of figuring out how to do it. So instead, um, I just want everyone to be thinking about what their ideal expungement process looks like.
So I, uh, I'll, just to stop you real quick, uh, I got confirmation that, uh, the two new sections being added to the MDT. Which is state announcements and city council documents. They may not be there yet. It might be a reset. Uh, so I am going to tsunami, Jesus fucking Christ. Um, I assume you meant. I've been in this room for too fucking long. Um, so essentially, uh, I am going to sit down and create, uh, your staff profiles, uh, at some point, either after this meeting or later tonight. Uh, and then what we will all have the capacity to do is upload documents to the city council documents section. Which will only be viewable by us. Uh, so that way you could, for example, Max, throw up your draft on expungements.
Ooh.
Uh, and then utilizing the functionality of the MDT, we can all make edits. So someone could just claim a color and then write in that color, their comments, whatever. And that'll allow for more, you know, functional communication without having all be in the same room.
Or just have, uh, you know, like bar line at the bottom and then people could spitball their general opinions on it, you know, outside of it. Yeah.
So I'll work on getting all that, uh, organized, uh, later today.
Yeah, so I guess that's something we, the explosion we could discuss throughout the week then is probably much better.
Exactly.
Yeah, um, so think about pardons and how, uh, uh, we, we kind of came to a consensus following that vote. That failed three to eight, uh, five. Um, that we want to see a, some sort of group decision after a mayor nominates somebody to, uh, for pardon. Um, we do not know how we want that to happen because there are certain concerns about confictions. In terms of people who may have been prosecuting or, uh, you know, are privy to certain details of the case by virtue of their, their employment with the DOJ. Um, so we need to think about a, a, a way to formulate a group, uh, process to issue pardons. Uh, that have the ability to seal the crimes that they would be getting pardoned for. Uh, it would be the duty of the mayor to present the person that would be getting pardon to the, uh, whatever group is going to be created to take this on.
No, not yet.
Uh, to kind of advocate for them in a, a sensible, a sensible manner, not just like, hey, uh, this guy, I'm gonna pardon this guy for whatever. You know, like, uh, uh, essentially presenting their case for why this person should be pardoned.
That sounds great.
Um, the, the, the precise voting group on that, I don't, that's what we need to be thinking.
Hell, you write that shit up, I'd vote for it.
Okay, um, I, I, I would, I, I, I'm gonna have my, what, what I'm trying to say, sorry, Alex, I, I, I'm gonna let you talk in a second. Uh, what, what I want is everyone to be kind of thinking about what that group of people that would vote on that particular person in that particular scenario would look like. So when we meet up next week, we can, uh, we can spitball it, uh, with more clarity, I guess. Sorry, Alex, go on.
Was the marriage act the unanimous yes?
Yeah.
I know, none opposed.
Are we still instituting, uh, crimes that are not pardonable?
Um, we have not even discussed that.
Okay, we, oh, that's, that's something we could do like in the moment after we get, get rid, like get through the hard part, right? Uh, but also be think, be, be thinking about that as well.
That's part of expungements also.
Got it.
Cause we're, we're talking about what sticks on your record after an expulsion.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, there are, there are certain crimes in the past that, you know, terrorism, treason, et cetera, that stuck on your record even through an expulsion. However, that being said, personally, I'm open to arguments either way. Because the whole reason why those crimes stuck on your record was because expungements were fucking handed out like candy. So if expungements are much harder to get and more scrutinized and more, you know, time gated, for example. Then I might, I might not agree that expungement, that heinous crimes could always stay on someone's thing. In fact.
Not right now.
Uh, five or six years ago, I was thinking about passing an amendment to the legislation.
They keep yapping.
Said that if it had been over, you know, nine months or something since the offense, that the crime could be expunged. So I'm open to discussion either way. So I don't, I don't want to give any illusion that I think it necessarily needs to be a thing.
Even I got an expulsion.
Oh, really?
Oh, really?
Yep.
Oh my god.
I, I got expelled because the government collapsed, guys.
Mine was only for jaywalking, but I didn't want it on my record anymore.
Mutual combat laws.
I, let, let me just say, I, I'm, first of all, thank you, Michael, for being here. Uh, I know, I know it's been.
Yeah, are you alive? God damn it.
Are you okay?
Sorry, there, Michael.
I'm still breathing, kinda.
We believe in you.
Thank you, Alex, for taking notes. It's a very important job. Thank you, Crane, for your, for, for your wisdom and thank you, everyone who provided their, their opinions and insight. Uh, this is a very good inaugural, uh, council meeting. I think it proves.
Hold on.
What?
Where's the old yeller?
Uh, uh, well, I'm gonna revise that one for, uh.
Present your ideas, coward. Lily livered son of a bitch.
No, 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 no.
Ten toes, motherfucker. I listen to rap music.
We, we, yeah, we, we.
We're doing that shit next. Business asshole.
We, we're doing that shit next week. Uh, we've been here for four hours. I don't, we got, we got stuff to think about, homework to do.
All right.
He'll throw that shit in the MDT, I'm sure.
Um, Crane, thank you for updating the MDT with all the new shit that we did decide to do.
Yeah, I'll work with Alex and I'll put everything in, so. Whatever, uh, didn't get drafted, uh, I think the only things assigned were Max, you're going to revise and put into city council docs. The things that we didn't vote on. Uh, Malton is going to do the first crack on which one, Malton?
I'm just gonna call it council ethics.
Yeah, right. The, uh, wait, oh, the, the civilian oversight board.
Uh, no, 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 disclosures to the.
Dislosures, yeah, there.
Yes, yes. Civilian oversight board I could also do based off of what we talked about.
Handle stuff that Alex and Alex has in her notes.
I need to talk to you after that, Dakota, by the way.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, well, good shit, everyone. I, I, I think this proves, this proves that we are able to work together and that the, the people voted correctly.
I think it's a good work.
Lot done. Good shit.
Sick. Meeting adjourned.
All right, let's get out of here.
Bedtime.